Order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Saturday, January 4th, at 8:30 a.m. in the meeting room. Get ready for our all-day extravaganza. We had State of the Town last night. Thank you to Mrs. McCammon, Mrs. Stein, and Mr. Deneen, who were able to make it. It was a good night. The Board of Finance Chair took a moment to reiterate his support of our teachers' contract, which is much appreciated. And we heard from all sectors of the town on the comings of goings. And the general consensus was that we should all proceed as responsibly and cautiously as we can, but that Darien is a good spot. And part of that is the leadership of its town volunteers, which includes this board. So, thank you for all of your efforts and your work. We do have a long agenda, and in case anyone noticed, it's December, so I'll try to make it brief. But just if we get towards the end of this, and we can, a happy holiday season to everyone, and we look forward to going into budget season with you very soon. With that, I'm gonna pause, 'cause I know how busy we are tonight. So, public comment. You can just come up to the podium, and I just need your name and your address.
I'm Jackie Miller, and I live at 84 Fitch Avenue. Kelly Gartrell, 10 Dickinson Road.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
Sure. Jackie Miller, and I'm at 84 Fitch Avenue.
Kelly Gartrell, 10 Dickinson Road.
Did you spell your last name, please?
Gartrell, G-A-R-T-R-E-L-L.
And also your address, again.
10 Dickinson Road.
Got it, thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
We want to thank Dr. Adley and the members of the Board of Ed, who we've already been in touch with already about the issue we're here to talk about tonight. We want to make you aware of some of the safety issues for students who live within the two-mile radius of Darien High School and are denied bus service. The two-mile walk that our children are currently expected to take takes them around 50 minutes in freezing temperatures with heavy backpacks. A student who lives 1.8 miles from school, as our children do, would need to leave school well before sunrise, today that was 7:07 a.m., in order to walk to school by the 7:40 a.m. start.
So, if you think about the walk from where we live in Dickinson, on the south side of 95, they have to go through multiple on-and-off ramps at 95, train tracks, so busy commuters that are rushing to catch the train. Been there, done that. The Heitz Road construction that's gonna be going on in the near future, it's gonna even amplify all of that. And then those gas stations, it's a really busy intersection. And in the wintertime, when the plows are going by and spraying the sidewalks, and we're reliant upon neighbors to clean their sidewalks, it doesn't happen, as we all know. So, we're really, really concerned about our kids walking to and from. We didn't find out about the issue until the night before school started. We have ninth graders. We're also representing a lot of underclassmen in our neighborhood that have grave concern, and the kids are already experiencing anxiety that they're gonna have to walk to and from school, and they're in like, well, seventh, eighth grade, and then grammar school.
So, we respectfully ask that we add the topic of busing to the agenda in January. We understand that there are budget ramifications, and that this isn't an issue that just affects us, that affects many children in the district. And we want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? With that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone, and I trust you had an enjoyable Thanksgiving. It just seems that the last we met, we had Thanksgiving, and when we meet again, you'll have the winter recess, so happy holiday season greetings after this meeting. There's been tremendous amount of musical concerts this time of the year, and since last I reported, there's been even more. We've had a wonderful middle school winter concert. We have had several district musical ensembles that have performed at Stanford Town Center, and combination of the high school and middle school singers who performed at the Palace Theater. And tomorrow night, I believe, is a middle school concert. There's concerts at 6:30 and 8:00 p.m., so the fun continues if you get a big chance to attend. The running track, I believe, is almost complete. Mr. Lynch walked it this afternoon and reported it looks in good shape, so I think we have just a couple of things to remove from it, just from the track itself, a pavement roller and some other equipment, and I think we're essentially done. So, again, thank you for everybody who supported that event. I just want to recognize that the high school received its recognition from Newsweek as one of the 100 STEM high schools in the nation. In all transparency, I need to know what the criteria was in order to fully understand that. It's an outcome of good things, but we certainly want to know explicitly what those good things are, so we'll look into that, but it was well-received. I did have an announcement for the buses. The parents did speak to it, so I won't address that particularly. I do want to just express appreciation to the number of parents who have been flexible and understanding, tried to work with us in this particular scenario, so thank you, and to be continued. Quiz Bowl, our middle school quiz bowl students, they did a wonderful job. I'm assuming some of those quiz bowlers might be part of the IDA program. I'm thinking. But again, they took first place at last week's Sandberg Winter Classic in New Jersey, so they're on their travels again, and off to Amish country in Lancaster, Pennsylvania in late January. The Turkey Bowl seemed to go off well, and well-received by the community in terms of organization. Congratulations to the football team, who move on to the state championship this coming Saturday against Newtown. As part of my entry plan, I do have a short four-question survey to go to the community. I was hopeful it was gonna be out today, but it'll definitely be out, and I won't say tomorrow, but it's definitely out this week. So, look forward in your inboxes, clog your inboxes. It will go to all parents and staff members, and some other members of the community. Our community conversation, thank you to the board members who were able to commit to Monday's night's first meeting of the strategic planning, so that will take place with Dr. Richard Lemmons. We just have to finalize that tonight to make sure everybody's fully on board, but that's scheduled, so it's nice to get our first session, board session, with Dr. Elmore. Also, Thursday night, the 12th here, we're having the community conversation, so there's about 30 members of the community who have been invited. It's not just a select group, like, it's just the NCCJ can only accommodate so much logistically for the night. So, it's not just a school event. In fact, we're not really looking inwards, per se, we're looking outwards. So, as we address issues of anti-Semitism and racism and the nature that has expressed itself this year, we're looking to partner with the community and to see what response we can get, we should have. So, that will be Thursday evening, and I look forward to reporting back on what I hope to be a very successful evening. I'd just like to recommend to the Board of MA that I just think it would be good practice if we scheduled the various committees that meet, facilities, policy, finance, on a regular basis every month. If we have to, for whatever, I don't think we're gonna have to cancel it many months, to be honest with you. I think there's a lot to fill it. It would be very helpful to me, it would be very helpful to my team in preparation, it would be very helpful to the board organizationally, I think. So, with your permission, I think I would communicate through the committee chairs to try and organize a regular, it might be like Wednesday morning every month for one of the committees or otherwise. But we'll poll what might work for people, but I think it will just, I just think it will be a beneficial step, so stay tuned, and I'll contact the various committee members. Final budget decisions were relatively made this week, so we're sort of closing that process out, and I know the board receives a copy of the budget before the winter recess. Thank you to everyone who participated, staff, and our staff here, and also our staff in the schools, and our students, particularly in recognizing the R of Code that really sort of celebrates computer programming and education. I actually look forward to looking at our computer programming, hello, John, our computer programming sequence throughout the schools as we move along here, just to see kind of what we're doing K through 12 in that area. It was also nice to see, to be participating in the RTM last night, to see local decision-making in action, and you did a very nice job on my side, but so did everybody. But it was nice to see, everybody talked about the RTM and the 100 people in six districts, and it was, for me, it was nice to see, oh, this is how it comes together. I was warned not to sit in the middle, I was wondering why can't they sit further down the road? No, that's reserved for RTM, okay. It's like going to church again, I was in the back pew, so. Wednesday, the 2nd, is a special board meeting, where we present administrative's or superintendent's budget. Saturday, 4th, we know that we're, that's the Saturday to look at the budget and the various RCs. I did hear back, I want to recognize, whether you're in the audience or whether you're looking on television, I did hear back and receive some feedback on the conferences today. I've received some back prior to the conferences today, that perhaps, there's certainly some parents who would consider that may not be the best way to do, to reschedule for a number of reasons. I will say this, we did reflect upon that, and we're gonna continue to reflect upon it, and make some decisions now for, for actually next year, to be honest with you, so that we're not in this position moving forward, and we come to some consensus on the value of conferences, and what we should or should not do when we actually have to cancel because of climate weather. And I want to recognize that the Board Chair and I attended CES legislative meeting this past week, last Friday, and basically topics covered everything from supporting access costs and special education funding from the state and also the federal government. We also looked at classroom safety bill, and there was some interesting discussion about late start times, but I'm not putting an idea in your head, okay?
Dr. Adley's being generous. End of the conversation.
And again, season's greetings to all our families for the upcoming holiday. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, the Legislative Breakfast was great, as it is every year. This year, Darien had representation, which is nice, it's the first time in three years we've had it, but it was, it was an exciting day. There were lots of emotions in the room around lots of complicated topics, so we look forward to continuing our conversations with our legislators. With that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. It is requested that the board approve the following. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on November 26, 26, 2019. Mrs. Stein, so moves, seconded by Mr. Seeny, all in favor. Any opposed, and any abstaining? Mr. Burke abstains.
Pardon me.
The motion carries. And the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 22, 2019. May I have a motion?
Sorry.
Mr. Burke, and a second, Mrs. Stein, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to board committee reports. Mr. Deneen.
The Oxridge Elementary School Building Committee had a regular meeting on December 5th. A couple of topics that were discussed. We went over the process that's been developed for invoice approval and payment and processing in terms of what goes through the committee, and then what goes to Town Hall. The key to it all is coming back to Rich and the Board of Ed, for specific coding that has to align with the state payment process with respect to the fact that we're going through the process with the state to get funds back on the overall construction. So, as invoices have started to come in, we've got that all set up. We also discussed the upcoming presentation to the building committee, which will be this Thursday, December 12, at 7:30. As we've discussed, and as a lot of people have heard, the overall pricing for the Oxridge Building, the new school has come in about $10 million over the projected $63 million budget that was approved by the RTM. So, we're kind of working through, what does that look like to get us back to within our budget guidelines? I think John Zagrotzky, the Chairman of the Board of Finance, summed it up nicely last night. He said, "We will build the right school." That's the goal, to build the right school. With that, eliminate the portables and do all the other stuff that we want to do, but the key is to build the right school. We'll continue to do that and stay focused on it, but there are things that we'll look at, starting on Thursday, that SLAM and ONG will present to us as recommendations to get the budget more in line. So, that will be a robust discussion, I'm sure. Once we've had that discussion and some ideas or concepts come out of that, if anything has to do with changing the ed specs that are presented, then that has to come back to the Board of Ed for a conversation, and I'm sure will be a robust conversation also. Dr. Adley's been briefed on all of this, and we've met with him and had some discussions about some stuff that we need to talk about, so I think it's all been a good conversation, but the key will be what they present to us on Thursday, so stay tuned for that. We also went over the commissioning agent, which is SES, and the package that we presented for them. Their key, a commissioning agent is required by the state. They will go through all the plans and all the design and the construction plans to make sure they're in alignment with all kinds of state requirements and local planning and zoning requirements. At the end of the day, they inspect the building to make sure everything works properly and everything's lined up with building codes. We also got an update on the draft traffic study that was prepared by Ty and Bond. The good news there is they found no significant changes are required to the school traffic entry to accommodate the new school operation. There is an adjustment possibly to the traffic signaling in terms of green and red and yellow, but they'll look at that further. Their next step, once we finalize the overall construction plans, is to look at a study of a temporary traffic pattern that may be needed during construction. That was it from a meeting perspective. Again, the next meeting, where SLAM and OSG will present the overall plans and the cost estimate, will be this Thursday, December 12, at 7:30 a.m.
Duke, I just, just to clarify, 'cause I know there's been a lot of conversation kind of out in the ether, there's nothing before the Board of Ed at this point.
Correct.
And part of that is the architects need to come back.
Correct.
With recommendations, the building committee needs to consider that.
Right.
But I would imagine that ed specs could come, so I know in December, we typically only meet once, so if they come, we will convene a special meeting as quickly as we need to, to consider them, to keep the project on track.
Yeah.
But until then, we are in a holding pattern, so.
And what we'll.
Stay tuned after Thursday.
What we'll do also, I think what we've heard too, is as soon as we finish that meeting and get our notes together, we'll get the information out to the board as soon as possible for review, so that everyone is prepared as possible for the conversation.
Great, that'd be great. Thank you. Any other board committee reports this evening? Okay. We will move on to presentations and discussions, discussion and possible acceptance of the contemplated gift from the Blue Wave Booster Club. Dr. Adley and Mr. Manfredonia.
So, we have a $10,000, plus this $11,000 gift from the Blue Wave Boosters, Chris is here to talk to it. I'm pleased to see that there's a range of athletics that's been supported, and also equipment for the band and scorers' tables, and a few other things that you see before.
So, this is a bi-annual recommendation to the Board of Education for some accepted donations from the Blue Wave Booster Club. This one you see in front of you is for the winter and the spring sports. You see the fall, I think we saw it in June. And so, these are requests that coaches have made of the Booster Club that are the nice-to-haves, the things that are not supported by the Board of Ed budget, that we would like to see support our students in athletics and the band as well. First time you see here on the requested list is the scorers' table for the Genesium. The current one is about at least 10 years old, maybe more. It's a little beaten up. We can still probably use it, but we'd like to see a new one in that facility. It's, I think, time for a new one. The spring back hurdles would be used for our boys and girls indoor track program. Those are hurdles that, for training purposes, that spring back up if they're hit, you know, by a student. For the band, we have a Bose compact PA system. For our cheerleading program, we have both the competition music, as well as a tumble track fly right, which would allow them to safely practice stunting about a foot and a half off the ground versus flyers in the air. So, it's a piece of equipment that they could use to do some training on the ground. Boys and girls golf, like to use some practice materials for, include two-color balls, speed trap, and mirrors. The boys and girls ice hockey request is for some ice, off-ice shooting stations. Basically, it's a mini batting cage for hockey. It can be set up on a turf field, and it's like a rollout batting cage that the boys and girls hockey team could use for some off-ice practices. The boys' basketball team has made a request for 25 bags. You saw a similar request last year from the girls' basketball team. And then finally, the boys and girls squash team would like a new overlay sign of the week you see in the center row as you pull up to the high school, down high school lane.
Great. Are there any board questions? So, Mr. Deneen.
I would just ask, because it's incredibly generous, as always, you mentioned something like the boys' ice hockey off-ice skills and shooting that can be set up on a turf field. This sounds like stuff that needs to be, I hate to bring it up, needs to be stored somewhere.
It'll be stored at the high school, yeah.
So, as you're investing in all this great equipment.
Yeah.
Have you figured out, as you add to all our equipment, that you can store this new equipment?
We have, it folds up neatly and nicely. We, that will be stored at the high school.
Okay.
Good spring cleaning to help everything.
I guess.
With that, may I entertain a motion to approve the contemplated gift, which was described by Mr. Manfredonia. Mr. Brown, so moves, Mr. Burke seconds, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia.
Thank you so much.
And please thank the Blue Wave Boosters for their generosity.
Thank you.
We will move on to a curriculum update on gifted education. Dr. De Silva and Mrs. Linda Johnson.
Good evening, and thank you to the Board of Education, most specifically for supporting all of our instructional programs, especially at this time of the year. We talk about it a lot, but tonight, we're talking about gifted education, and here in Darien, we call that IDEA. In the memo, which is quite comprehensive, you hear about different aspects of our IDEA program that may not be presented tonight, but from a historical perspective may be helpful. The one area that I will just speak to specifically is the acronym IDEA, given the fact that we have a special education presentation tonight. It is different than the federal guideline of IDEA, so when you hear IDEA, it's uppercase I, and then lowercase d-e-a, versus our uppercase I-D-E-A. So, tonight, Linda Johnson, who is the Director of Elementary Math, Science, and Gifted Education, will be presenting alongside three of our colleagues, Andrea Aaron, Michelle Matera, and Kara Martin. So, I'll turn it over to Linda and thank the team for preparing and presenting tonight, and for all of the hard work that they do in the interest of this population of children.
Thank you, Dr. De Silva. I'd like to begin by thanking my colleagues who have come out this evening to join me in sharing information about our IDEA program. So, as you may remember, from the last time that we presented, we established a district committee which was charged with reviewing the program's vision, identification process, and curriculum. As a result of our work, we did establish a new vision that you see here. It now includes an interdisciplinary programming through the domains of English language arts and mathematics. We felt it was important to create a vision statement that acts as a practical guide for establishing goals and guiding our curriculum work. Because we added mathematics to our vision statement, we also thought it was important to develop guiding principles about how we will integrate mathematics into our curriculum. As a gifted program, we value engaging students in authentic situations where they are going to apply skills, concepts, and strategies learned in the general education math class to further develop their ability to interpret, reason, and communicate critically, while making mathematical connections and reflections. Next, I would like to talk about the gifted programming that takes place in Darien Public Schools. We believe that in addition to the quality education that is taking place in the general education program, gifted students have unique needs and require specialized instruction. It's important to note that as a district, we follow the programming standards established by the National Association for Gifted Children. Currently, in our district, about 5% of our students are identified as gifted and are receiving services in grades 2 through 9. Our district average and our programming, which I'm going to describe in a minute, is comparable to other districts in our reference group. In Darien, we offer services to students in grades 2 through 9 in a pull-out program. All students receive services for 90 minutes per week, except for students in grade 2, who receive 75 minutes. At the elementary level, students receive services primarily during our differentiation block, during which no new instruction is introduced, along with other times throughout their day. At the middle school level, students receive programming during the flex and/or lunch study blocks. We have received mixed feedback about IDEA taking place during lunch study, so last year, we implemented something new, where we began to pull students into the flex period along with lunch periods to receive IDEA. We have a certain number of student groupings that were able to accommodate this type of service in grades 6, 7, and 8. At the high school, the IDEA program culminates with the Achievers Program as an elective in grade 9. Students have class time four days out of the eight-day cycle, and they confer with their teacher during a study hall. We do believe in establishing a learning environment that fosters collaboration and communication with our students. Therefore, we aim to keep our class sizes in a range from 10 to 12 students, and there is a great range from the elementary to the secondary level. In the primary grades, we have fewer students than the intermediate grades. Therefore, our group averages 6 to 8 students at each elementary school at each grade level. At the middle school, we typically have four to five sections of 10 to 12 students in grades 6, 7, and 8. And at the high school, the Achievers Program usually averages two sections of 10 to 12 students. However, this past year, we have fewer students than in years past. Last year, we did conduct an exit survey with all of our 8th grade students and parents. What it told us is that there are various reasons why our students choose not to continue with IDEA at the high school. For example, interest in other electives and courses. Each year, we do look closely at our student numbers and determine if there's a pattern or a need to make changes. Next, I would like to talk about our curriculum. Since our last presentation, we took an assessment of our curriculum guide that was established in 2015. First, we reviewed the program goals that you see here and defined them as either intellectual goals or social-emotional goals. Then, we looked at the process skills that were outlined in our curriculum guide, and we defined them, as you see them listed on this screen. We also took each skill and created sub-skills for each. For example, under communication skills, we have listening actively, analyzing, and discussing ideas. We also aligned the skills that you see here with the program goals that were on the previous After that, we connected the goals and skills to our grade-level units that follow a conceptual theme. What you see here are the current units of study at each grade level that provide content differentiation, with an emphasis on higher-level thinking skills as they relate to topics that are not presented in the general education classroom. Our units also provide process differentiation, during which there's an emphasis on a different way to teach the topics and activities that students engage in. This evening, Ms. Aaron is going to show you an example of our work using one of our 5th grade units. As I mentioned earlier, we are also charged with reviewing our identification process to make sure it was well-aligned with our vision. It now includes standardized measures in reading comprehension, creativity, and mathematics. Since our last presentation, we did add the mathematics characteristics to the Rinzelie Scales for rating student behavior. Next, Ms. Matera is going to speak about our identification process and these measures.
Thanks, Linda. Good evening. Identification is an important component of effective gifted education programming. All students in the Darien Public Schools have equal access to the referral and identification process, a multi-dimensional approach which includes verbal and nonverbal assessments. Parents or teachers can refer children in grades 1 through 8. The fall referral period is for students who are new to the district in grades 2 through 8, and the spring referral cycle is open to all students in grades 1 to 8. Because the OSAT is used as a universal screener in grades 3 and 5, those classroom teachers use this data point along with additional information in deciding which students to refer, so we often have an increased number of referrals from classroom teachers in those two grades. Also, students who have an individualized education. Also, students who have an individualized educational plan, or IEP, may also be referred to the identification process for gifted education. During that evaluation process, testing accommodations outlined on the student's IEP are followed. The special education team, along with the teacher of the gifted, determines who will administer those assessments. Should the student qualify for gifted education, the student is then identified as twice exceptional and will be offered gifted programming in addition to the special education services they already receive. Because gifted children are not all alike, it's important to collect information on the child's performance through various identification instruments. The instruments we use highlight the most common traits of gifted learners: original or divergent thinking, a high level of curiosity, abstract reasoning ability, passion for learning, and creativity. These culture fair instruments are widely used throughout the United States. Starting with the Otis Lennon School Ability Test, or the OLSAT, it's used specifically to measure abilities related to academic success, testing critical thinking and reasoning skills. It's intended to test memory, speed of thought, and the ability to see relationships and patterns. A creative writing prompt. The Ranzilli Scales for Rating the Behavior Characteristics of Superior Students in the areas of learning, creativity, motivation, communication, and now mathematics, which this form is completed by the classroom teacher with the special education team and other educators as necessary. And last year, we administered for the first time the Degrees of Reading Power, which is a measure of a student's overall ability to comprehend and critically absorb passages of text. Also, we've added the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking, which was designed by Dr. Paul Torrance, who is a leader in creativity. He also created the Future Problem Solving Program, which we have implemented for many years in IDEA at the middle school. We were formally trained by the Torrance Center at the University of Georgia. We did pilot a number of math assessments during the past two years, and we found they had a very high correlation to the nonverbal score on the OLSAT. So to minimize the loss of instructional time, we decided not to add any additional measurements as a result of that. Instead, we added that mathematics characteristic to the Ranzilli Scales that the teachers complete. In addition, we do seek feedback from parents during the referral process in the form of a parent questionnaire. This information is also reviewed at the placement meeting. As you can see, our revised identification measures are more comprehensive and provide a broader picture of the different aspects of giftedness. I'd like to pass it now to Mrs. Aaron to give an example of how we've started to revise our curriculum as Linda mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to give you a little bit greater insight into how the IDEA program aligns and implements its goals. Historically, the IDEA program was built on the following four principles: gifted students need advanced, complex content; we apply an interdisciplinary approach to each theme; creativity is nurtured actively and encouraged; and we use a pull-out model, which is important and effective. It is supported by research-based evidence. When gifted students collaborate, they challenge themselves in unexpected ways because it's a dynamic and creative process. They bounce ideas off one another, and they take their peers' ideas to another level. I'd like to show you how this works in practice, so I'm going to focus everyone's attention on our fifth-grade program. So our fifth-grade program, our curriculum, is called Shapers of Western Civilization. It's an examination of the factors and people whose influence on modern society is felt today. In order to understand modern economics, politics, technology, the arts, and the like, it's crucial to learn about what has preceded us, and cultural literacy is especially important to gifted children. So the goals of our first unit, Roman Civilization, are listed here. And as you can see, here are the goals and process skills that Linda referred to earlier. And if you can focus your attention on the first two bullet points of Goal One, I would appreciate that. Goal One is Critical Thinking. So I'd like to give you an example. In class, we recently examined the many causes for the fall of Rome. And in one lesson, students were presented with a list of emperors, their respective reigns, and the reasons why they no longer ruled. They were asked to review the data and to summarize their findings mathematically. By looking at this through the lens of mathematics, average, mean, mode, percentages, they were able to see patterns and then make inferences about the instability of that particular time period. We also integrate mathematics into this curriculum by studying and doing construction projects, which focus on the architecture of each era. So I could go on, and I could elaborate and get very excited about the curriculum and talk to you about other bullet points, but I think I would have to enroll you in the program at this point. So let me turn my attention or our attention to another aspect of what we do, which is differentiation and collaboration. Gifted education by design is differentiated. Differentiation for gifted learners is the responsibility of all staff across all content areas, and that is achieved through collaboration. We IDEA teachers are ambassadors and very strong advocates for our students. We work with teachers on various ways to differentiate instruction within the regular classroom. We support the teachers by providing enrichment resources for individual lessons and long-term projects, many of which we write ourselves. We help teachers design independent study projects for individual application as well as for small-group instruction. We collaborate with special education teachers about how to differentiate for twice-exceptional students. And periodically, we design and present professional development for our colleagues. We also want to stay current ourselves, and so we join our general ed partners in professional learning experiences. For example, at the elementary school level, Math &amp; Focus, or digital portfolios at the middle school, we sit in on those sessions. We also actively seek other learning opportunities for our own department to enhance our effectiveness. And so recently, we were trained, as Michelle had referenced, in administering and in scoring the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking. We also attended a session last year on creative problem solving, which has been a cornerstone of our program for many years. And then, in October, we went to a three-day workshop in Hartford on project-based learning. And project-based learning is a teaching method in which students examine a complex problem or a real-world issue over an extended period of time. And they demonstrate that newly-acquired knowledge by creating a public product or presentation for an authentic audience. And this is an effective method of developing critical thinking, creativity, and communication skills. So we are presently developing PBL units for fifth and sixth grades. So where are we going? Project-based learning is just one of our future plans. Another ongoing effort is the review of the content of our curriculum and instructional practices to ensure that they reflect the program vision and the identification process. We are at the beginning stages of our work. We are going to review the themes at each grade level, many of which we'll keep. Some may get shifted around, and other new themes may be introduced. We do plan to keep Word Masters in grades two through eight. Word Masters is a nationally-respected program that builds vocabulary and abstract word relationships. We've used it for many years. We apply the challenging goal division, which is quite well-suited to the needs of gifted learners. We will also continue with creative problem solving, and that's a program that promotes innovation and divergent thinking. As Linda previously mentioned, we've established guiding principles for how we want to integrate mathematical reasoning into our program so that students can apply the skills and the content that they acquire in the mainstream classroom. And we'll continue this learning in January as we attend PD with our colleagues. There are other learning opportunities that we are investigating and will pursue in the coming months and year ahead. So thank you very much for your time and for your attention to our IDEA program.
Great. Thank you. Oh, hands are already up. I haven't even gotten there. Okay, so thank you for all the hard work. We've been waiting for an update, and it's already provoked lots of questions. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. It was a terrific presentation. My question relates to Susie's memo, if it's appropriate, just more nuts-and-bolts-ish. Looking at the gifted program across Dergay, I see that particularly in the elementary school, there seems to be a divergent approach in terms of the minutes pulled out, et cetera. Is there a reason for that? Is ours considered the most effective delivery program at the 75 minutes per week in the grades three to five pull-out? And related to that, I see that we're the only high school that has a grade-nine Achievers Project elective. And sort of similarly, if it's such a great thing, why are we the only ones doing it?
I'll answer part of that, and then I will turn it over to Linda if she wants to add anything to my response. I think it boils down to a community's values or priorities, or perhaps even budget, why you might see some differences. So I'll speak to that part first. And so you might notice, well, Enrichfield currently do not have a program across any level, and that may be for a variety of reasons. I won't speak on behalf of their community, but I imagine that those three that I mentioned earlier are likely the case. With respect to our pull-out program, when these teams began to study the gifted program that we offer here several years ago, we were pretty well-aligned to the other communities. So if you look, there are some communities, for example, Westport, that offers 120 minutes, but yet they only offer it to students in grades three through five. Most of the programs at the elementary level and middle are a pull-out program, so we're quite similar. There's some variation in the minutes, but we're probably right alongside those that offer. As for the high school, as Linda mentioned, I think that there are some reasons why students at that level may choose no longer to participate. And in the exit interview that we receive from students, it's a variety of reasons. There's a lot of choice when it comes to the high school program. What they might want to take as an elective may be a variable. In addition to that, they may, depending upon what their course load looks like, they may want that study hall. It just really depends on the student's social-emotional needs that they may have. So we currently have a program. The program that we offer students, we believe, is meaningful, authentic. I'll leave it at that. Linda, do you want to add anything?
I think you've pretty much covered it, Dr. De Silva, except that we are very mindful of the amount of time that we pull our students from our general education classroom, along with that social-emotional learning component. So it's really looking at a student's whole day. We also are cognizant of students missing lunch study at the middle school level. So if the time was increased, that would need to come from somewhere at the secondary level.
Mrs. Stein?
Mine is sort of a piggyback on Mr. Burke's question. It's about ninth grade. And I guess philosophically, I know you said best practice is to do it three through nine. Correct. To me, ninth grade is a transition year. It's a difficult transition year for students going into the high school. It doesn't seem like a natural ending to a program to me. So I guess I'd love to hear from you guys as to, you know, sort of what Mr. Burke is saying. Why do we do ninth grade? If we are doing ninth grade, should we extend it beyond ninth grade? You know, to me, I just don't, it seems like such an odd place to stop. I also hear feedback from students as to why they're not picking IDEA in ninth grade is because they say it's just one elective on your transcript, and colleges may not be aware of what it means. And I've heard that as well from students, so I'd love to sort of hear a little more on the high school and what you guys are thinking in terms of it going forward.
So, Ms. Stein, I'll just start off. I don't think I heard Linda say that best practice or the research extends into ninth grade. I think when you get into the high school, exactly what we're experiencing is what we would expect to experience. Having said that, our enrollment has been 10 to 12 students. So for a number of years, we've had the enrollment there that students have been excited to continue that level of study. We have seen a shift, and that may be for some of the reasons Linda described earlier. Right now, I would suggest that we, should we continue with Achievers in ninth grade, that we continue to see what that enrollment looks like. It is one of the sections that we continue to run regardless of the size. That may be a decision that we have to make at some point if we're seeing that our students are making other choices when they get to the high school. And so, natural start-stop point, that may not be in the future. But currently, we've offered it because our students have selected it, and we've not diminished that opportunity for them.
Okay. Mrs.? Oh, sorry, Linda.
I was just going to add on by saying that we are aware of the student numbers each year. We look at enrollment, and as you heard me mention earlier, in our gifted education program, we value having like-minded peers come together where they can communicate and collaborate. So we do look at the low enrollment right now and how that does affect those goals in terms of global thinking, gaining different perspectives, independent study in different topics, and how students can collaborate and work with one another around those topics. So we're very mindful of it because a low enrollment in that program can affect the implementation of some of the program goals.
Mrs. Ritchie?
I just wanted to go back to that chart that was included in the memo. And what jumped out at me was really the middle school, where here in Darien, we have 90 minutes of programming per week, but I'll just use New Canaan. There's 225 minutes per week. And I know in their program, they begin differentiating with mathematics and language starting at fourth grade. So obviously, those hours are filled by that type of thing. Is that something, now with adding more of a math component, is that something we're considering doing? More of a differentiation so those gifted kids can get a more accelerated math within that classroom?
At the elementary level or at the?
Well, both.
At the middle school level, that happens by the courses that we offer.
Right.
So at the elementary level, Linda and the team, when selecting Math &amp; Focus, looked specifically at that and the opportunities that students have for differentiation within the current math program. And Math &amp; Focus does support all students and allow them to go deeper within the curriculum that we have, whether that's through the problem-solving approach that we offer our students. So we have not looked to expand or begin homogeneously grouping. I think that's what you're asking at the?
Yes. I'm hearing from parents that that is something that they would like to be added to the IDEA program, especially at the elementary level where they're getting them more differentiated, specifically with the math.
So we don't have Math &amp; Focus right now in grade five. I would suggest that we consider how that influences students' social and emotional well-being, whether that's feeling that level of pressure to be in a different math class, per se, at the elementary level. I think it's a bigger conversation. Right now, our approach has been to differentiate within the general classroom, within the homeroom, for lack of a better word, at the elementary level. If we were to go down that road, I think that would be in the future if we believed that our math program did not support the differentiation that we need to have happen for our students. But I don't believe that that is an area of concern yet. Linda, do you want to speak to that?
I agree with you, Dr. De Silva. Actually, the contrary. The feedback that I've been receiving from our classroom teachers, including myself, is that the change in our primary resource is really meeting the needs of our students. There is such a lift in rigor in terms of how we're teaching that balanced framework that you've all heard me talk about now several times in terms of conceptual understanding, computational fluency, and problem-solving, along with the resources that are available within Math &amp; Focus, that our students' needs are being met. So in terms of math acceleration, that's not something that we're looking to study at the current time because we typically look at what are our needs when we go to look at something new.
Mrs. McCann?
I'd like to pick up on that point of mathematics. I'd like to please understand a little better...
I understand what you mean by interdisciplinary when you talk about, you know, the Roman Empire, but I don't understand how to think about that mathematically, what you're doing to bring mathematics into that kind of curriculum in a meaningful way.
Sure. So, what we're currently doing and will continue to do, and remember, Ms. Aaron said that we're at the very beginning stages of this, is first developing a good understanding of what the general education curriculum looks like and sounds like at each grade level. And then saying, okay, that's what, for example, a current fourth grader or fifth grader is learning in math. How can those skills, whether they're computation skills or problem-based problem-solving strategies, how can those be applied to the themes that we're teaching? As we're revising some of our units in terms of project-based learning, there's that authentic problem where students might need to apply calculation skills to a problem that they're given. That's difficult for me to give you a specific example right now because we haven't done that work in terms of the project-based learning. We're at the beginning stages of that. But it's really looking at what skills are taught in a general education classroom and how they can be integrated into our themes. I would imagine a good amount of that will center around problem solving and having an authentic problem where students are engaged in discourse around the process that they're going to take to solve a math problem, encouraging our students to look at a problem with many different approaches and applying different strategies. And an important part of that would be evaluating the strategy and approach that they've taken so that they might need to revise their current thinking because they may not have gotten to the answer that they expected or it wasn't possibly the most efficient strategy to solve that problem or that engaging scenario.
Mr. Brown?
So, I'm sorry, Dr. De Silva, just following up. So, you mentioned a situation where we'd be sort of, not really, but sort of taking kids out and putting them in a different math class potentially, or at the fifth grade level? In response to Ms. Ritchie's question, I'm just trying to understand. If we've identified these people or these children for this program, why would they feel anxiety if we've identified them for a higher level of rigor?
So, that's a little bit different. So, my, or my understanding of Ms. Ritchie's question was whether or not we were looking at differentiating math by teacher. For example, a high math, a general math at the elementary level is not?
It wasn't specific to that. It's, are we going to differentiate?
So, the answer to that question is that happens now each and every day for our students, whether they're students with, that are identified as gifted learners or students with learning differences that may need more intensive instruction. Our Math and Focus program that we, as Linda described, we have identified is incredibly rigorous for our students and has required us to take a step back in terms of how we are supporting all of our students because it is asking them to think differently than they have in the past. In terms of fifth grade, we have not rolled out Math and Focus. So, for that grade specifically, that's what I was speaking to. Oftentimes, when we begin to group students differently in mathematics, it happens in the fifth grade. That's what I thought you were referring to, Ms. Ritchie. In terms of differentiation, we're expecting that in mathematics and across every content area. So, it's not limited to just one area.
I'll just add on that one. My colleagues and I form our curriculum development teams, whether it's science, social studies, literacy. We do include ways to differentiate within the units and lesson plans that we develop. For example, I'll speak to science. We ask our students to engage in many inquiry-based learning opportunities where they can generate their own questions. And one of the greatest ways that we can differentiate for learners, whether gifted learner, non-gifted learner, is to give students choice and ownership to their work. So, when students have an opportunity to engage with meaningful, purposeful materials and develop their own questions and plans on how to answer that question, that's one of the most common ways that we differentiate in both our science and social studies units.
So, I have a question. As a board, our job is to approve curriculums, set sections. And when the budget comes, we certainly look at sections. The high school comes back and reports. Achievers has me wondering, I know we'll watch our numbers and in terms of running that class, but if there was no Achievers, then am I correct in understanding that these students would have choice and be interacting at peers, even if it was a sophomore peer, a junior peer, and that they'd be stretching their mind and being able to work at a higher level? It's, sorry, I'm not asking this clearly. It sounds like the goal is to group peers because peers drive peer in curiosity and creativity. High school, we're seeing that there's so many options that children can do that very differently in that environment than they can at middle school and elementary. So, if there was no Achievers, and I'm not saying anyone's proposing that, but would those students have ample opportunity to be amongst peers, even if not in the same grade, to challenge their activities and their education?
The short answer to that would be yes. Whether or not they would end up selecting a course with another student who was identified as a gifted learner, I can't answer that question. Would they be with other students that have exceptionalities? Having been a part of Darien High School, yes. The answer would be yes. We have students with great gifts there. They vary their gifts. But I would suggest that certainly they have other peers. But whether or not they'd be in classes with students who have been identified specifically as a gifted learner just depends on the course in which they take.
No, but in theory, they might, let's say, if they're gifted in the areas of science, be able to choose AP Environmental Science as a sophomore, whereas other students might be only, be ready to access that in their junior or senior.
Of course, and they may be with students in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade who were identified as gifted. But now they're, we don't offer programming, specific programming for IDEA in 10th and 11th grade. So, they might be in a class with a junior or a senior who was identified.
So, it shows us what we'll see coming, that choice matters.
Right.
Choice is important. Okay. I saw another hand. I saw Mrs. Ritchie's, and then I'll come around. Sorry.
I just wanted to go back to professional development. So, I guess you touched on it a little bit, but if we can get more specific, especially with the classroom teachers, what type of professional development are we giving to them so that they are able to work with the gifted students? If we're keeping them in the classroom for things like math, what professional development have they had?
So, across all of our content areas at the elementary level specifically, we do speak to differentiation in every professional learning experience. I saw it today, for example, at the middle school with a staff developer that was working in English, where they were pulling small groups based on the exceptionalities of children, again, varying along that continuum of exceptionalities. Our classroom teachers are provided professional learning times throughout the year and then embedded professional learning throughout their interaction with Linda Johnson, with Cory Gillette, with staff developers that come in district, whether that's Teachers College, or the staff developers that we acquire through our Math and Focus program. Linda, do you want to speak to additional opportunities that they're being offered?
Our teachers collaborate with their colleagues. I believe you heard Ms. Aaron speak to that, whether it's on a one-to-one meeting, a formal PLC at the building level. We have certain PLCs and district days that we set time aside where there are sessions devoted around gifted education and how to differentiate for gifted learners. But there's this ongoing piece of professional learning that when a teacher has a need, he or she will, you know, ask Ms. Matera, can you meet during this period? Or Ms. Aaron, can we meet and speak about? So, I think that's another important part to talk about in terms of our professional learning community. It's not always those structured, big PD days, PL days that we put on. They do offer professional learning and support to our teachers ongoing.
Okay. Mr. Seeny?
Somebody used terms like low enrollment in a ninth grade program and seen a shift. Do you have a trend line that you can talk about the enrollment over the last three years or something?
We do, Linda. Do you have that data linked into the presentation?
I don't believe it's linked in the presentation, but I can tell you that since I've been in this position, which is now my third year, the two previous years, we have had two sections of the Achievers program, and there was a range from 10 to 12 students. So, about 24 students were enrolled in the Achievers program for the past, the previous two years. This year, we have four students.
Four. And then what kind of resources are you employing to serve those four students? And are there other ways that you can?
So, currently, we have one of our teachers from the English department. She has rolled that into her schedule, into her FTEs, and she teaches them four days a week in the eight-day cycle. And then, as I mentioned earlier, she confers with them during their study hall. She has really outlined a comprehensive program for our students where they have a choice in a topic that they want to study and they conduct independent research throughout the year. They share out their work periodically with one another. They collect feedback from each other. There's quite a bit of peer review in the program. And then, at the end of the year, we culminate with the Achievers program project where the students present their work from the year. And we invite all community members to that presentation.
Okay. I'm going to take a last round because we have lots of curriculum updates. So, Mr.?
Just a quick follow-up to Mr. Seeny. In terms of planning, do we, you know, we have the middle school, we have everybody coming together from the elementaries. Do we have any prediction as to what we're looking for over the next couple of years for enrollment based on what we're seeing in the lower levels for ninth grade?
In terms of our, I can't speak to the ninth grade as we said.
I have to forecast the ninth from the lower.
In terms, we can look at our eighth grade enrollment, but whether or not students are eighth grade students, but whether or not those children choose to enroll in ninth grade, that has varied. As for the elementary level, we have been pretty consistent at that, or actually, elementary and middle, at that 5%. So, our enrollment has stayed steady, I would say. It fluctuates from school to school, year to year slightly.
Do we generally identify at lower grade levels? Or do we identify the same percentage at, say, ninth or eighth grade?
We could pull that data, but I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So, you know, so we have, let's say, six to eight, I think was the number we had at some of the elementary schools?
Typically, yes.
Okay, so is that?
We do have some sections that are lower.
So, what I'm trying to get is, since the six to eight, do we identify most of those by, say, first, second, third grade? Or are we identifying 10 to 12 in the ninth grade? Do we have identified 12, 10 to 12 new ones, or eight or nine new ones in ninth grade? Or do we pretty much have this fleshed out by the time people leave middle school?
We have the most new referrals and identification of students at the elementary level. And that's typically in grades three and five. We do have a good number of referrals in grades one and two. We have more teacher referrals in grades three, four, and five. And that's a result of looking at other data points. You heard us mention that the LSAT is given as a universal screener. But we really don't have as many referrals at the middle school level. We feel that, especially with our new identification process and some other processes that we've put in place, we've really done a really, a very good job at identifying our students as gifted by the end of fifth grade. Very few new referrals in the middle school, and some of them are when students move into our district.
You're welcome. Mrs. McCann?
With the new identification process, I'm curious, I have two questions about identification. One, what happens if a child is singularly gifted in mathematics or in language arts, but not globally, and given that the identification looks at both? And then, I'm curious to know what our identification rates look like across elementary schools if, you know, that 5% is relatively even across the different schools?
So, the way that we assess our students through the identification process that you heard about this evening, the results don't tell us if someone is singly gifted in mathematics or English language arts. We can look at the data and the assessments, and we can see strengths, peaks in some of our students' performance, but we're not identifying them or labeling them as gifted in mathematics, gifted in English language arts. In terms of, I think you asked about the numbers across the buildings?
Yes.
Okay, so, overall, our numbers across the five elementary schools are pretty much the same. There are, at times, peaks and valleys, or highs and lows. For example, this year, our numbers at one of our schools is a little lower, but we know that we had a larger fifth grade group move out. Things happen in a school year. We had students registered, enrolled in the program, and a couple of families moved. So, we do see shifts in that way.
So, historically, we had some conversation about some school buildings having higher identification rates, but it seems like there could be a cultural component to that. Do you feel like this new identification process has smoothed that out?
I think it's the process, but it's not only the measures that you heard about this evening. We've really made a concerted effort to put structures in place that our team works with our general education teachers, our special education teachers, and our building administrators to make sure that we are consistently looking at student performance which might trigger a referral. We have many assessments that our teachers give through our district assessment calendar, and it's looking at those data points, not just the ones that we use for gifted identification to say, is there a student who you might refer? So, it's those conversations, structures that I've put in place in terms of how we are analyzing the data that we have on students.
The universal screeners at grades three and five. Ms. McCann also push to ensure that we have a standard that would trigger us to dig deeper. So, that is a shift. And the teacher referral rate over the past four or five years has changed as well. And I think that's because the criteria is very structured and the amount of professional learning that has come from the team and Linda in terms of helping teachers understand what those characteristics of a gifted learner are has changed and has evolved. And that's really a testament to the team tightening up some of the routines and structures that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the update and all the work.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your time and attention to our gifted education program. We greatly appreciate it. And one more time, I thank my colleagues for coming out this morning, this morning. Soon, soon, this evening, as well as Susan Morrison, who couldn't be here this evening, but I know she's sending us well wishes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. I had the opportunity to be in the IDEA class today. I've also had the opportunity to see some of these Achiever programs. And it's, I just want to say, we have a wonderful, dedicated staff, talented staff, as we do across the board. And it's nice to see serving this population of students too. And I do think sometimes there's a struggle between how much you let someone go, that social emotional learning part versus the investment part. I think that's a joint sort of decision between parents and administration to some degree. And I know the middle school lunches and all, as you mentioned, is something we want to resolve. But anyway, thank you for all your hard work at the departments. I'm super job thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr..
Thanks. We will move forward and have the annual special education update from Mrs. Klein, Dr. McCarthy, Ms. Schwartz, Ms. Straighton, and Ms. O'Reilly.
Sheeran, do you want to just test that microphone and make sure that it's on?
Sure. Is it?
I don't know.
Super.
Can you hear back there? Okay, great. We'll give you a moment to get settled.
You're sitting here in front of Congress here?
I was going to say.
Good evening to the Board of Education. I'd definitely just take a moment to thank you for your continued support, Dr. Adley, for your support, and to the community for supporting our programs for students with learning differences. We always look forward to the opportunity to go over and do our overview and our continuum of services annually to the Board of Education. So, thank you again for this opportunity. Just want to pause for a moment for introductions also. I'm wondering what our program directors do and our special education chairperson, since you've been generous enough to have us have this high level of support in terms of responsibilities. So, if I may just introduce Dr. Scott McCarthy, our program director for secondary services, Shera Schwartz, elementary program director, Laura Straighton, our ELP director, and in the front row, just so you see, our special education chairpersons from Middlesex, Teresa Fox, and from Darien High School, Kristen O'Reilly. And some of the responsibilities, before we go on, of what they do. They're responsible for the fidelity of developing IEPs and implementation of IEPs in their respective schools and programs. They're responsible for professional development to ensure that we really are committed to best practices in specially-designed instruction and programs for our students. And they also demonstrate this indefatigable commitment to realizing shared goals. And that's really for continually to develop exemplary programs for students with learning differences. We have shifted, and I'll not be subtle, but I will say, we really want you to acknowledge our students as students with learning differences, not students with disabilities. It's a shift that we respect in terms of how we all look at students and look at our programs. So, we will be changing a lot of our language to making sure that we respectfully acknowledge that they are students with learning differences. that they are students with learning differences. Now, I don't know where the clicker is for this. Okay, someone has. One of my commitments is to improving my technology for this year. You can see, okay, doing okay, but can do better. But let's just start with, so Shira, you're in charge of this part?
Right.
Okay. So, the first one, and I won't go over it, but Dr. Adley actually pointed out to me and said, you know, you have a lot of acronyms in these presentations. Maybe you could put together a glossary or something that would really let you know. So, throughout tonight's presentation, you will see an array of acronyms. This is just for your reference at a later date to really look at some of the acronyms that are consistent with our programs and with the Connecticut State Programs also, as well as the federal guidelines.
For the record, as the board chair's recommendation, just, just for the record.
I'm happy for it to be Dr. Adley.
Just for the record.
And thank you to both of you, because it really is a great cliff note to have and to make sure that we can really understand some of the language we're using and some of the programs that we're really committed to in terms of our professional development for staff. So, each year, we do begin just letting you know why we have these programs. And the reason we have programs for students with learning differences is because we are required to have them. It is a statutory requirement under the Individual Disabilities Educational Act, and we, as a district, are committed to identifying students who may have a disability. I'm using their language from the IDEA, or difference. In that, we have an obligation to child find and making sure that for children who do live in Darien, that we are identifying and looking at the opportunity to evaluate still children. In that evaluation process, to make sure that it is a multidisciplinary team, which includes a clinician for cognitive assessments, a special educator for academic achievement assessments, as well as speech and language pathologists, motor evaluators, that can be OT or PT, teachers of the hearing impaired, teachers of the visually impaired, or any other clinician, to ensure that we have a multidisciplinary approach to assessing students who may have learning differences. Once the PPT does agree to do those assessments, we're responsible for convening a PPT too, making sure that the evaluations are properly reviewed, that there's an understanding and an exchange and a dialogue between families and clinicians and teachers and administrators of what those areas are that may require specially designed instruction, and how, if we do determine eligibility for special services, what they'll look like. Can you go back to the first second, Shira? On the bottom, we do have links, if you want to look further into that. Those links are to the guidelines with the Connecticut State Department. So, our overview, just, and we'll speak to each of those tonight with our respective program directors, but just to understand that the reason there is a continuum of services is we are required to have, going from least restrictive environment supports to students who might require more intensive level of support. So, least restrictive always is general education, where students don't require any additional services, and they're able to access that, not needing any specially designed instruction. There are students who may just need a related service. Our related service can be a child who requires speech and language services, but no other pull-out services or push-in services, and the only goals they may have are speech and language goals and objectives. That would be your least restrictive. That can happen in ELP. That can also happen in any programs K through 12. When we look at general education and special education support services, when specially designed instruction is required from a special education teacher, in all our ELP through our K through 12 programs, we have push-in services, and that, again, is designed and developed by the PPT. And we also have co-taught classes in English language arts and mathematics in grades six through 12. For a higher level of support, we have special education teacher supports, and those, again, may look like resource rooms in our elementary and secondary programs, learning centers. They may have direct reading instruction as well in our middle school and high school programs. And we also have the AIM program in Middlesex, and we have our core program in the high school. And again, our respective program directors will speak to those in detail. For children who really require a more specially structural environment, we have modified classes. Our modified classes don't change the information that children are required to receive in those content areas, but they are designed in a modified format that may have a different pace, a different design, or a different access to the curriculum. Are we winning?
Are they winning?
On those modified classes, we also have in grades six through eight, we have our ALC classes, and we have in nine through 12, our comprehensive classes. Scott will speak to that. Those classes in the high school level are taught by duly certified teachers, which means they are certified in their content area, as well as special education. And in our most supported environments, we have our DLC, our Development and Learning Center classes, in our elementary school, and those are both housed at Oxbridge and Hinley. And in our middle school program, as well as our high school program, we have our ALC one class, and we have our Excel program in the high school. We'll begin with our ELP program with Laura Straighton speaking to the program design and supports.
Good evening. The Early Learning Program. The Early Learning Program is an integrated preschool setting where children with learning differences learn alongside children with typically developing skills. We provide a nurturing, supportive environment for all students to learn. Shirley Klein spoke about the continuum of services, which is also reflected in the Early Learning Program. We are mandated by the state of Connecticut to find children that may be having difficulties, and so that is through the referral process. We receive referrals from Bertha Threesystem, from parents, pediatricians, local community schools. So, the ELP team will evaluate the child in the areas of suspected disability and determine if the child is eligible, and then what the child is eligible for. From least restrictive, or the least amount of service would be, let's say, speech and language, as well as the intensity of the needs grow. We have a 16-hour program, a 20-hour program, and a 22 and a half hour program for children with IEPs. Typically developing children will attend the 16-hour program. At the heart of the program is the students. They are taught by certified preschool teachers. We have school psychologists dedicated to the ELP program. We have speech and language pathologists dedicated to the ELP specifically. We have occupational therapists. We share physical therapists, behavior analysts, and we also have paraprofessionals to support the growth and the classrooms within ELP. We have several professional development highlights over several years. One I would really like to point out tonight is the early detection of reading difficulties. At the end of last school year, the Office of Early Childhood put out a grant for preschool specifically, to improve an area that they felt was necessary. And we were awarded a $6,000 grant in the area of early detection of reading difficulties. We are not diagnosing reading difficulties at three and four, but there are strategies and that, that we can target based on evaluation of children that are three and four. So, we are working with Dr. Margie Gillis from Literacy Howe, and she is providing us a series of professional development days. We are exclusively using, well, not exclusively, but the special education teachers in the preschool, the speech and language pathologists, the paraprofessionals, as well as some early elementary teachers and reading specialists have been attending the workshops. We have six workshops over the school year, and the next one will be on the 17th full day. Thank you. And we are housed currently at Tokonik. We have two classrooms. We have 20 students, nine students with IEPs, two preschool special education teachers, five paraprofessionals, and six students who attend itinerant services. Oxbridge, we have two classrooms, 13 students, three with IEPs, two teachers, two pairs, and nine itinerant students that receive services. At Royal, we have four classrooms, 35 students, 13 students with IEPs, four classroom teachers, one special education teacher on an itinerant basis, 10 paraprofessionals, and eight itinerant services.
Thanks, Laura. Hi, everyone. Good night, good evening. I'm Shira Schwartz, the program director for elementary schools, and I'm going to try to do two things at once, speak and click. As Shirley mentioned previously, we have a continuum of services that extends across the district, and this is what the continuum of services at the elementary schools look like for students in grades K through five. So, through our continuum, our planning and placement teams develop IEPs that are tailored to meet the needs of all students on an individual basis, and really that are designed to ensure that they're able to act, not only access, but also make progress in general education. And we do that by aligning our IEP goals and objectives to common core state learning standards and providing specialized instruction and support across any domain that we identify. So, similarly to ELP and to the remainder of the district, we do have students who receive speech only as a special education service. There are students who receive support from a special education teacher in the general education classroom, so you've heard the term "push-in," as well as students who receive more direct and intensive or explicit instruction by a special education teacher outside of the classroom in, in a resource room in a small group. And then we also have our specialized, our specialized programs at Hinley and at Oxbridge, the developmental learning centers, which I'll talk about in just a moment. Similarly to ELP, we have just about the same kinds of staff. We do share certain staff across the district, like OT, PT, and behavior analysts. Unique to the elementary schools, as most of you know, are the special education and student service facilitators. They are parent-facing, staff-facing, student-facing, support individuals at each of our elementary schools. So, for parents, I sort of, I lovingly refer to them as special education guidance counselors for parents. They are there in service of parents and their knowledge and development of the special education process, so that they know all of what's going on inside of the schools. Likewise, they coordinate efforts for meetings and processes and data collection to make sure that everything is running as seamlessly and as smoothly as possible. For staff, they do certainly provide consultation and instructional support if there is any area of expertise that they do have. We try to use everybody in, you know, to maximum capacity in our schools. And with students, you know, they have, all of these SaaS facilitators have been educators and have worked in our schools, and so they also do weigh in on student cases through the PPT process. We also, I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Education for the additional school psychologist that was approved for the start of the school year. We were absolutely thrilled to start this school year off strong with two school psychologists in every elementary school building, and I have had the honor and the privilege of being able to evaluate them alongside of the building principals. And I have to say, what I am seeing inside of these schools is nothing short of amazing. I have seen school psychologists who are pushing into general education classrooms to lead whole-class lessons on really critical topics in social emotional learning, in behavior management, and support, and they are so visible and so active and really just hungry to be a part of the school community, and we just, we can't thank you enough for the support. Looking at our professional development, we have focused very intensively on our literacy instruction and expertise for our special education teachers, and also for our speech and language pathologists. In particular, we have teachers across our elementary schools who have participated in the Wilson Reading Systems training. So, we have a subset of teachers who have received the initial training through Wilson, and a cohort of, of teachers who have gone on to either receive or who are currently participating in a year-long practicum course, which is called the Wilson Level One Practicum Course. They are supported all year long by a Wilson expert and working with students to receive that highly regarded certification by the end of the year. So, we have some teachers who have already received that and other teachers who are in, who are in progress, and we look forward to continuing that. Likewise, we're supporting our speech and language pathologists in their role in these literacy programs. We've also been working really closely with Linda Johnson in the Curriculum and Instruction Office on making sure that our special education teachers at the elementary level are very well-versed and trained in math and focus. Linda and her team have been providing ongoing and embedded support, not just during the professional development days, but also live and in school with students on how our staff can best support rollout of math and focus in our specially designed instruction settings. For our school psychologists, we are really thrilled to be working with Cognitive Behavior Consultants of Westchester to roll out dialectical behavior therapy at the elementary school. So, we're just in year one of that. We're just getting started, but there, there certainly has been a lot of enthusiasm and buy-in from all of our schools on that front. So, looking at our special education teacher support services, as I mentioned, they can both be, they can be delivered either in the classroom or in the resource room. Looking specifically at our general education classroom support, we're also, lots of exciting stuff at elementary school. We are partnering with Marilyn Friend to look at what our specially designed instruction looks like inside of the general education classroom. Marilyn Friend, as you know, works at the secondary level, looking at co-teaching, and so she'll be supporting our efforts in a self-study this year at the elementary level. As always, our goals are to ensure access and progress in general education, high-quality IEPs, data collection, and progress monitoring. And this year, I'm excited to announce that we have continued our practice of grouping and looping, thereby ensuring continuity of service and matching of students and staff so that kids can experience continued work with staff members who know them well. You know, certainly, in some cases, it doesn't make sense to continue grouping and looping for some students, and that's based on their needs and the specific expertise of the staff member that we would need to, that we would want to pair them up with. Shifting gears to our specialized programs, our DLC programs in Hinley and at Oxbridge. We currently have two sections at Oxbridge Elementary School, one section in grades, that serves students in grades K through two, and one section that serves students in the upper elementary grades. At Hinley Elementary School, we actually have three sections, one kindergarten section and two sections that serve students in grades one through four. And again, just to orient everyone, the DLC, the Developmental Learning Center programs are in place to support students with developmental disabilities or delays, and also students on the autism spectrum, really in a explicit and applied behavior analysis or pivotal response training approach, and language-rich and language-based approach to support throughout their day. So, students spend the majority of their time in the DLC, but we've been seeing some really nice opportunities for inclusion and meaningful inclusion over the past year. So, looking at our staff specialization, they have been extensively trained in curriculum modification and meaningful inclusion practices, so really taking a look at when these students do go into general education or are interacting with typically developing peers, that those opportunities are really meaningful. As I mentioned, we're working with community-based organizations to ensure training in pivotal response, as well as discrete trial teaching or training, and relationship development intervention. Our paraprofessionals in the DLC programs, nearly all of them at this point are certified registered behavior technicians, uh, therapists, excuse me. That means that they have gone through a 40-hour training and supervision by a district behavior analyst to receive that level of specialization to support children with autism. And in particular, we're thrilled to be working with staff who are well-versed and expert, experts in augmentative and alternative communication, and we've been taking a look at really cool uses of technology to further functional and expressive communication in our students who might otherwise have very limited communication abilities. And in terms of our highlights, we continue to work with Laura and with Scott on the ELP to DLC to Middlesex transition, and that's been, that's been going really well as well. And we continue to use the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia to assess and progress monitor core skills, as well as catalysts to look at our data collection and analysis.
Sure. See if I can do two things at once as well. Apparently not. There you go. Okay, so Middlesex Middle School is staffed by 17 special education teachers, three speech pathologists, and three school psychologists. That allows us to have one speech pathologist and one school psychologist per grade who loop with their students. It also allows us to have one special education teacher per team. As you know, we have 12 teams at the middle school, and the other five special education teachers are staffing our more specialized programs, which I will be talking about next. The first service delivery model at Middlesex Middle School is our co-talk classrooms. So, as you know, this is our third year working with- So as you know, this is our third year working with Dr. Marilyn Friend on our co-teaching models. And it's really resulted in us realizing effective instruction in the classroom in the actual six co-teaching models that are research-based. And we're seeing that happen in practice, which is exciting. Our next service delivery model is our resource rooms. Some highlights of our resource rooms, which are delivered by special education teachers in small group instruction, are that we've added a dedicated weekly team meeting for special education reviews. And along with Teresa Fox, who's been helping implement a skill-focused mini lesson instruction at the beginning of every resource room for all students. Direct reading instruction is our next service delivery model at Middlesex Middle School. This is taught by a special education teacher who has specialized reading training as well. The primary programs or approaches we're using are Orkin-Gillingham, Wilson Reading Systems, and visualizing and verbalizing. Just something of note, we are giving a parent presentation this Friday morning at 9:30 at the middle school. Teresa Fox, along with one of our direct reading instruction teachers, will be providing that parent presentation. Our next service delivery model is our AIM program, which stands for Academic and Individual Management. This supports students who have emotional differences in the building and who require a sort of emotional support station. It's staffed by one special education teacher along with our clinical staff. We've, we are in our second full year of DBT implementation in this setting. And we have a focus on group counseling right now within the setting. We also have implemented yoga this year in the setting as an emotional regulation strategy. Our next service delivery model is our ALC II program. ALC II is a modified academic curriculum in an area. So for example, ALC Math VII would be a math, small group math class taught by a special education teacher with modified content in the instruction. We are seeing a reduction in the number of these classes as our, as our co-teaching instruction and the models are being implemented with increased fidelity over the past few years. This year, we currently only have two sections of these classes. And the last service delivery model at Middlesex Middle School is ALC I. This is a program designed for students who require modified content in all areas of academics and life skill instruction. We continue to work with the New England Center for Children and implementing programs such as Touch Math and Do the Math within this program. We're also increasing our community-based instruction this year as well. So the high school. The high school is staffed by two speech pathologists, three school psychologists, one social worker, and 15 special education teachers. The first service delivery model at Darien High School is CO-TALK classes, which is similarly mirrors the CO-TALK class model at the middle school with one special education teacher alongside a general education teacher. This is our third year, again, working with Dr. Marilyn Friend on co-teaching at Darien High School, where we're continuing to realize the implementation of the six different research-based models. Kristin O'Reilly has worked closely with Dr. Marilyn Friend in working on in-class coaching of those six models, which has been very effective in getting those off the ground. Learning centers mirror resource rooms at Middlesex Middle School in that they are small group instruction taught by a special education teacher. As some of you may remember, the model used to exist in nine, 11, meaning grades nine and 11 in one resource, or in one learning center, and then grades 10 and 12 in learning centers. We have moved towards grade-based, grade-level learning centers where we believe that we can more effectively meet students' needs. We've, again, increased our focus on having mini lesson, skill-focused instruction during learning centers as well. We similarly have direct reading instruction at Darien High School, where we're again using Orkin-Gillingham, Wilson Reading, and visualizing and verbalizing training. The focus of our direct reading instruction is just taught by special education teachers with specialized reading instruction is to have structured multisensory, multisensory instruction in reading happening at the high school as well. And we currently have three teachers teaching these classes. Our core program somewhat mirrors the AIM program at Middlesex Middle School. The core program is staffed by one teacher, one paraprofessional, and a social worker and a school psychologist are attached to the program. The program includes two community groups in our eight-day cycle where DBT instruction is implemented. We are again in year two of that, where we are, our staff are meeting bi-weekly with CBC to maintain their DBT skills. A unique structure to Darien High School is our comprehensive classes. As Shirley mentioned before, our comprehensive classes are taught by duly-certified teachers, meaning that they are certified in their content area and as special education teachers. So for example, if a student was enrolled in comprehensive algebra, their teacher is a certified math teacher and a certified special education teacher. The curriculum aligns to the 300-level courses and is available in any academic content class required for graduation. And our last program at Darien High School is the EXCEL program. The EXCEL program mirrors the ALC I program at Middlesex Middle School. The EXCEL program is staffed by one teacher and is connected to a number of related service providers. It's a program that's designed for students who again need modified content in all academic areas and significant work with functional living skills. We're excited that this year we have an increased focus on community job site visits and having actual job sites for students, and students are going out into the community twice per week. So I will turn it over to Shirley to talk about special education, district, local, and state trends.
Thank you, Scott. The first one shows, just to identify also, there is a note on the bottom that this is not officially released yet. So it's our CDAC numbers that we report. It is now. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Now, it is released. So it is, it has been submitted to the state, it's our October 1. So we report our CDAC from October 1, year to year. So when you look at the trends and the information based with students with IEPs, this is PK through 12. In the current year for 2019, if you look at the trends, we have reported 811 students PK through 12 plus. So 12 plus means through 21. So that's all of our cohort of students. On the next slide, just to also look at that, just to see the jump and useful of the jump, just to give you an understanding also of students new to the district. This year, we have, and it's similar to other districts in our DIRG, we had 60 students with IEPs move in between October 1, 2018, and October 1, 2019. Also, just so you know, 32 of those students out of the 60 actually were students returning to district at different levels and different benchmarks. So part of that increase also is due to the number of students who have come into our district. When you look at our trend again, this is K through 12 plus, which means through 21 also. When we tried to compare it with the percentage of students with IEPs in Connecticut as well as in Darien students, you can see that our 2018, 19, these were official rates, where our percentage was at 14.4. And that's compared to the state, which was at about 15. And if you look at the historical trend, we reported out based from 2014. Again, this goes through 18, 19, where we are within the DIRG of similar districts. You can see within all of the districts, again, they may have started at different points in their percentages. There has been an increase. Increase might be due to child find, might be due to identification. But we can say with confidence and fidelity to the process is we are assessing students consistent with the regulatory statutes and making sure that we are mindful of the proper assessments, evaluation process, and determination of PPTs. Again, looking at educational classifications, there are 13 classifications. We did want to point out, and this is consistent with prior years, but the one part is for other health impaired, just to show, because you can see that when you're looking at other health impaired, you're looking at 34.5 or 0.6 percentage of the population. Other health impaired does include children with clinical needs as well. Very often, ADHD is one piece that's highly represented, but it also represents children with other clinical needs. And that would fall under health, other health impairment. Our department structure, again, as we supported earlier, just shows the level of support we have in each of our buildings, both administratively to support students with learning differences. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, once again, for a very comprehensive report and bringing out your whole team tonight. Board questions? Mrs. McCammon?
I'll start with where we just were. Shirley, I know you talked about migration as being one of the reasons, potential reasons for the increase in number of children with, with learning differences. Do, have we looked at anything else that might be driving the identification rates? Is the number, is the rise in each learning disability or learning difference consistent? Or there are certain classifications that are experiencing different rises? What I'm going for is, for example, the rate of children with something like Down Syndrome is typically consistent, whereas our understanding of dyslexia and other types of learning disabilities has grown. And so I'm curious to know if you, if we are seeing a constant rate that might have to do with, if we're seeing a constant rate, or if we think that part of it is changes in legislation around, for example, dyslexia and other types of learning disabilities, as well as a better understanding.
So I'd want to look further and come back with an answer that is more data-based on looking at, we can go back and look at the trend over years of actual classifications in the categories. I think it is a combination, though, of it is, child find is one obligation of being diligent and vigilant on that I think has impacted it as a part of the trend. When I look at classifications, but I will go back and look at it in more detail, the broadness of autism spectrum disorder, I think, has been broader over the years also, whereas there is a larger continuum. So that might be, but I'd like to go back and actually look at those numbers. And I think the identification of specific learning disability, but we should come back with real numbers and tell you what our numbers look like over the last five years in comparison. I think the area of, since Connecticut has an area for specific dyslexic behavior and SLD, but we could look and see how it has increased within the, you know, overarching SLD category and compare the two. But we could certainly come back with that data for you.
Mr. Brown?
Just to follow up on the data question, the histogram we had of the year-over-year for the DIRG and for Darien in particular, we had to, just trying to follow up with the other idea conversation we had earlier. We had the three presenters from elementary, middle, and high school. Could we see that growth chart broken out by middle, elementary, and Darien High School? So we've gone from 13% to 15% in the town of Darien.
Looking at it by school?
By, by the three broad buckets we had here.
We can certainly break that out for you in terms of looking at enrollment and numbers, we can. I don't have that for you, but I can provide that to Dr. Adley and do that, certainly.
Sure. And again, I think also with the information that was requested in terms of people coming into district, would like to see how that is driving the growth as well within those three categories.
Certainly can do that.
So let's say, it turns out in Darien, I'm sorry, my voice is a little shot, which should make you guys a little happy, but... So let's say we had a 15% growth over the past few years, or we went from 8% to 15% in Darien. So we break that up by the three different levels, elementary school, middle school, and Darien, and high school. And then let's say we went from, you know, it's a count of 30. Let's say it's the difference between the past three years in Darien High School. 15 of those are new people moving in, or three people are new people moving in?
So I'd like to be very careful on these numbers?
Of course, that was the caveat I was going to get to, yes.
So is the board looking for that level of specificity is what I, for Mr. Brown's question?
And I don't know, because we went to the 60, he gave us the number, so, but that was on the broad for the entire system. So I don't know if we can go into those three buckets, if that's true, but I defer.
So I guess the question would be, to what end? What are we asking the administration to demonstrate to us?
Well, we have a lot of conversations going on right now in terms of planning, certainly with Ox Ridge and some of the other facilities. I just don't know if there's information there that could be helpful in part of that conversation. You know, part of this could be a very big wildcard driven by people moving into town. It may be something we have to admit we really can't get a handle on, just given the age groups. And it may be helpful to that, it may not be helpful, I'm not really certain. But I just was trying to get more data, instead of just the broad for the entire system.
Sure. So and as we order work, we typically order it as a group, and it looks like it's a new analysis. I just would like to kind of poll board members, are they also looking for this analysis? And if so, what they think it would show, so as they do this, we know what we're looking for. My caveat on this would be, like, I would like to be very careful, because as you drill down those numbers, groups could get very small. And people moving into town could start to feel like, are you raising questions about me or my children? So are there any other board members who are looking for this work and/or can find a reason for what it would show the board? Mr. Seeny?
I was going to ask for more specificity on the student, the return to district students too, because you called that out. So I would be happy to see it, as long as it's not going to take four days to pull that kind of data.
I think for, to break down, that's a different question. But in light of what Ms. McHernan was saying also, there is information that we really can't give because in a small cohort, it can identify students.
Understood.
So when you're looking at that, I would not be comfortable in a small cohort of doing that. My understanding was, and I might have misunderstood, is looking at, at what levels, well, clearly we identify more children in elementary school than we do in secondary school. I mean, that is just based on, on skill levels and developmental. But there are children who move into district, whether they're returning or not, coming at different levels. So you may have a hard, you may have a lot of students returning in ninth grade, for instance, because some schools go up to eighth grade. But I do want to be sensitive to identifying students when it is a small cohort of students.
No, I think that's a great concern, I appreciate that. I just, I guess really with the early learning program and just, you know, some of the questions we're having around Ox Ridge, that's why any sort of additional data that you could provide without reaching any confidences or even getting close, then perhaps would be helpful.
Mr. Burke?
I, I mean, I understand the question, I mean, you're asking for different data to help in the planning process. I think I would look at it from a higher view in terms of, obviously, it's your, a part of your job to try and plan and prepare for a population of students. You're the professionals who come with that predictor, whether it's correct or off by a few. I don't need to, like, review your data collection. But just, I would be interested to just know and feel that you are, you know, comfortable that you are making your assessments for planning to the highest and most accurate degree, you know, possible. Then, but outside of that, I mean, I wouldn't be looking to try and figure out, oh, is there something that you're missing that could be done for better planning? My assumption is, is that you're making the best planning predictions that you, that you can.
So why don't we do this, if you go back for your data, if there's anything that's illustrative to boardwork in terms of policy or planning or how we might budget, if you could share that information with Dr. Adley, and he'll share it out to the board.
I think my comments were misunderstood. I was just trying to understand, is return to district, meaning the student was in the district, left and came back? Or are these new students to district? That's kind of what I was...
Yeah, so I think what I heard you say, if I'm correct, which actually I think you bring up a good point, we should highlight that there were 60 new students and 32 of those students were returning students, meaning that at some point they had been enrolled in Darien, which I think...
Correct. Twenty years were new, new families that moved in.
Yeah, so that speaks volumes, I think, to the work you're doing, that families are excited and wanting to bring their children back into district. Because I think most families, given that option, always want to have their children in district with their peers and their neighbors. So as we debate data, we want to see first kudos, because that's a fantastic return rate that we haven't always seen.
So could I finish clarifying what I was going to ask for? And in that, that trend, I mean, I'm a return to district parent, congratulations, that's been awesome. But taking my personal story aside, you know, can you show us a trend line over a few years of this, this return to district without, again, putting too much workload on me?
So why don't you see what you can find that shows us, and you put your heads together, and as long as it's not identifying, we'll share it back out to the board.
Thank you.
Can I just say, I'm sure, I just want to be clear, like, what the board is asking and why, because, are you clear?
Clear enough.
You're clear enough, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Mrs. Stein?
Different topic, Laura, for you on ELP. Can you just refresh our memory? When I look at the sections, Ox Ridge, for instance, I assume you have children who are going to age in?
Correct.
Because there are two sections with three, can you just talk a little bit about your sections at the schools and ratios? Because I know, just to refresh our memory.
So we have had three sites, a few years now. Tokenique, they have two classrooms. Tokenique, they have two classrooms, twenty students, nine students with IEPs, two certified teachers, five paraprofessionals, and the itinerants are children who just come for speech, speech only, not a part of that program. Ox Ridge, we have two classrooms, we have thirteen students, three with IEPs, two teachers, two paras because of the class size, and nine itinerant students just receiving speech. And then Royal has the four classrooms, thirty-five students, thirteen students with IEPs, four teachers, the itinerant teacher, and ten paraprofessionals and eight students receiving itinerant services. So I will say, at the beginning of the school year, there were about twelve families who left who had signed up for ELP. Some of them, most of them moved out of town, and we can't take students that are non-Darien residents. They went to, like, Texas and, you know, not just to another close town, but far away. We did lose some students due to their preference on a pre-K five program. We lost students due to some financial difficulties. So there was a variety of reasons, but the majority of the students did leave for other reasons, parents moving away. We do evaluate children throughout the school year, and again, remember, the October first numbers are nothing like our June first numbers, or June seventeenth numbers. So we are adding students, even, you know, young three-year-olds throughout that school year. We have been taking students that are moving into town, you know, not assigned to a community preschool or, you know, enrolled in a community preschool. So, you know, I do expect our special ed numbers to grow over the school year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Just following up on that, so right now we're at sixty-eight students, but you expect that by, we'll be at ninety, the normal level, but.
Yep. Nine, last year we ended at ninety-eight, I think. This year, you know, given, we'll see what life brings us, but it's not a perfect science. You know, we don't know who moves to town, they're three years old, so it's hard to really predict. You know, I'm, our enrollment is down, but I, it will.
I'm just curious about the twelve families, is that a typical number?
Nope.
That's pretty high?
That's pretty not typical, pretty not typical.
So it's unusual for so many.
It's unusual, thank you, yes. We usually use, lose some families, but not twelve. You know, and we're able to balance that out with people who move into the district or who choose to, who have been on the waiting list and, you know, choose to come to ELP over another preschool program.
Can I just follow up on that? So one of the reasons you said was cost, and then the other was pre-K? Could you maybe elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. ELP, in Darien, some families choose to send their children that are age-eligible for kindergarten to a pre-K program. And we are a school, and we do offer a pre-K five-year-old program because we have kindergarten. You know, the state says on January first, you are eligible for kindergarten, and so we support that, and we don't offer a pre-K five program. But the community preschools in town do.
So people are opting, they, in case they want the pre-K program?
So if they're a four, you know, and making that transition, maybe they were with us with threes, and they decide to have their fours at a preschool that does have that pre-K five option.
And then the, the cost, I know we increased tuition, is that, just that it was.
So we have, you know, we've always worked, I think, with families around tuition. We use the free and reduced lunch. However, you know, between the reduced, whatever, number and life actual, there's a gap. So some families are unable to meet that, so that is unfortunate.
So that would be true for the community preschools as well, because I think every time we look at tuition, we are very well within the median range for tuition.
Right. So we, I mean, we've been working with some families around tuition, however, we don't have other funding sources that perhaps private schools do have.
Mrs. McCammon.
Just building on that, on that, on that question of, is, it is, I have heard through the grapevine, because I'm still in this age range, that some of the preschools are now requiring that for you to attend their pre-K program, you have to have attended their threes or fours. Is, is that accurate? Is that changing ELP's enrollment rate at all?
You know, I've, I've heard that too. I don't have actual, like, policy to say, oh, yes, that's something that they do say. I don't have that information.
Okay.
But families have shared that.
If that's the case.
So again, maybe since now that we've opened up these twelve families and we've heard everything from our tuition to our, then maybe you could come back to us with some real numbers. How many families moved out of town? If this is something like, eight families moved out of town, well, then we're dealing with four specific cases. If one family moved out of town and ten people have a tuition problem.
Yeah, I have that.
That's something different. So maybe you could give us a little more specific.
Sure.
Specificity going forward. Could I just ask, are there any trends we see going forward? Are there any groups or classifications building off of Mrs. McCammon's questions that we're seeing a high rise in identification of X, and so we're looking at programming to meet that need? Is, is there any, I know that this can be very unpredictable and based on a given year, and students can have needs that arise at any point, but is there any kind of identification trend we're seeing that we need to build for or we should be aware of?
And we will go back and look at that, so we can give you, no one should have a guess at trends, but I mean, the one number we can say, in the time that we've built our DLC programs, is that, that size enrollment has really increased. When we started a few years ago, our program had four students at Hinley, we have thirteen students in that program now, which is why we've built three classes there. Again, but it is three, part of our students, without going into numbers, to identify. Our ELP program is the program that really lends into that kindergarten program, so that has expanded also. So I would say of all our programs, if we took one design or one program that we provide, it would be our DLC program has increased in the last few years. But again, if I go back and look at the data, there can be that many four-year-old children turning five that fit into that category. You know, looking at the cohort of students will change it also, but that is our biggest growth in program, our DLC.
Great. Any other board questions? Mrs. McCam.
I know it can be complex for certification reasons, but Scott, are there plans to expand co-teaching beyond math and English language arts into Spanish or science or other social studies?
Not at this time, no. Our focus has primarily been on the English and the math.
Okay. So what is your vision then for, I know, I know every individual student gets an individual plan, but what, how can you kind of talk to students accessing those classes?
Sure. Yeah, so, I mean, in working with Dr. Adley and her friend over the past few years, we've, we've posed that question to her before as well, because we do know that some, some other districts do provide co-teaching in those areas, and it's been the response that best practice would be to have co-teaching in the area of the IEPs that are identified through the, the present levels of performance, which would be in the English language arts and the math areas, because that's where the specially-designed instruction actually needs to occur.
Right.
So, so that's sort of the, the answer that we've been provided, is that, that's sort of best practice in the, in the provision of co-teaching. So it's been sort of our, our philosophy to improve that and to get that up and running as, as best as we can, and I, I think then possibly we could look at it in, in another time, but that's been our focus.
Okay. Any other board questions on special education? My last question then, with our new graduation standards, are we, do we feel like special education can kind of meet those needs for students as they actually have to meet those new requirements as well? We feel prepared?
Yes.
I like that answer. That's a great answer.
And hoping to come back and talk about sign language in the future also.
I know you are.
Thanks for the invite.
We're excited to hear it. Thank you all. Thank you all for all the work that went into this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I would say that even coming from the meeting last week, was reiterated a practice that I've noticed and experienced across the state and superintendents, and most districts would say this, actually, and I've only been here a little bit, but it's not associated with special education per se, so don't associate with special education. When you look for a pattern, the rise in needs and attention and concerns and behaviors of young kids at a very young level, right? It puts a tremendous stress on, on our professionals in many ways, for different reasons, but there is a pattern generally across the state of Connecticut of rise in needs at the elementary, primary school levels particularly.
Yeah. Dr. Adley and I heard a lot of this at Cabe, and then again at the Legislative Breakfast, that the, the rising behavioral needs of children are both needs of children and needs of staff. So we look forward to hearing more on how we'll cope with that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Thank you for.
An update on the District nineteen twenty goals. I know everyone has the goals in their packet, so maybe if we can take them by content area, and I'll ask the board if they have questions, rather than reading out each goal. Is everyone comfortable with that? Since we all have them? Are we putting them up so people can see them?
That would be great.
Yeah. It's thinning out in the audience. It is. It gets really cold here. K is usually freezing. It's warmer out there. It's warmer in New York City, isn't it?
Warmer?
Yeah.
No, the floor is colder over here.
It's freezing over here.
There's like a draft.
Does it help if I, if we pull them just from the packet?
Yeah, I'm just, I have to pull, the packet's not up here either, so I'm just gonna try to log in and get ahold of them myself.
Does it help if I, if we pull them just from the packet?
Yeah, I'm just, I have to pull, the packet's not up here either, so I'm just gonna try to log in and get ahold of them myself.
All right, so I'll make mine quick.
I'm not gonna, I'm definitely not reading this, okay? So you're on your own. Basically, we're up and running with the entry plan, and we've started the strategic planning, that's the long and the short of it. As I administered the, the, the survey, it will be this week, but other than that, we're up and running.
Okay. So we'll take any questions for Dr. Adley? Or we all feel confident that it's up and running and will be out this week?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Seeny? Oh, I'm sorry. When, at the top of the meeting, Dr. Adley discussed that his survey.
Yes.
Go ahead.
My bad, I'm sorry.
You're okay. As part of the, as a part of the entry plan, I'm administering a survey to, to constituents, so it'll be done this week.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move forward to curriculum and instruction. Maybe if we, we at least read out the goal?
Sure.
And then if there are any questions on it?
The first goal was to study the exploratory model. The electives in particular offered at Middlesex Middle School, grades six through eight, in relation to best practice and continuing growth, and if there were some recommendations, they would make them as appropriate. This is a two-year goal, and Middlesex will plan on presenting late winter, early spring. They have made some progress. They've developed a scheduling committee, they've identified the strengths, for example, recess, flex, team. They've identified some opportunities for growth and have already identified some areas of challenge, for example, just space, best practices, et cetera. I won't read it to you, but that's where we are with the update, and we plan on bringing a full presentation to the board late winter, early spring.
Okay. I would just say, look forward to that presentation, because as we see it, the high school choice matters, and freeing up blocks of time might matter, and kind of across the board, one for all students and two, certainly for the IDEA students.
Voice and choice was an area of exploration. The IDEA schedule is, it's one of those variables in particular at the middle school level, and having experienced that in other districts for my own children, et cetera, when they get to that place, finding the time for students without them missing another content area and feeling like they have work to make up in those content areas is a seriously, an area that would be serious consideration before making a change.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All right, we'll move forward to the next goal.
The second goal is to assess the current placement structures across all courses and levels and identify appropriate best practices. The most important is develop a vision, a common vision philosophy across the content areas. So we have lots of different placement practices across various departments, and what those departments feel about how children enter in, when they can drop a course, what that structure has changed or evolved over time is an area of study. So they too, the department chair, will, will be here early spring to share out their findings, and if they're going to be making any recommendations based off of a common vision across all departments.
Okay. Four questions on this goal? Okay, we'll move forward.
The third goal in curriculum is around a reimagined library space. We did provide an update that is linked into the board goals that provides both a recap of our presentation, which I won't reiterate today, and also the reimagined report that we presented back in May of two thousand eighteen, I believe. We also provided in that memo an update of some of the work that began this year, so hopefully you had an opportunity to read that and, and that that was helpful in bringing everybody up to speed.
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll move forward.
We have a continued goal around STEM, and you can see that there is an update, and while we don't have a formal presentation scheduled to come up, that is likely going to be added to the master agenda, because we are proud of, of the work that has been done, and you may remember last year, this board supported a budget around Project Lead the Way, and that has been a significant change at the middle school in a positive way. And so you'll see that we've added another grade to our STEM outreach program in, at the elementary level. Actually, Tara spoke to that last night, it's facilitated by our high school students. It's an incredible experience for both populations, and that is facilitated actually beautifully through this elementary science coordinator, Linda Johnson, we've heard her name several times tonight, Christian Dockham, department chair at the secondary level, and Joan, again, our director of instructional technology. We've created Hour of Code, that's going on this week. You've probably seen those T-shirts and kids excited, and lots of emails around that. We're proposing an additional STEM course at the middle school. This may actually tie in or may not tie in to that first goal around voice and choice for kids at the secondary level. They're studying innovator's mindset as a collective group. And the high school teachers have been attending professional learning experiences and have been involved in identifying some areas of growth through that professional learning.
Any questions? Okay. Rich, you're up.
So the goal for the business office was to assess its structures and practices. So we did mention it, a previous finance committee discussion about implementing UCOA or the Uniform Charter of Accounts. So I had met with Bloom Shapiro, who was the state hire to implement UCOA, about what that would be for Darien, should we choose to implement that. Long-term, looking at our budget book and our financial reports, this is Dr. Adley and my first go-around in Darien in terms of our budget, kind of see how that goes and whether there's a desire for not this budget upcoming, but maybe with future budgets to make some adjustments or changes to how we provide data to the community, and whether or not we can be more transparent and clarity of data. Reviewing policies and practices for student activities and School Cash Online, seeing if we can be a little bit more consistent on how School Cash Online is used primarily at the elementary schools. Working to utilize Munis, which is our accounting system, a little bit more than we currently do. Using Munis so we can automate some functions within the business department more, and then just really reviewing the department rules and structure.
Questions? Mr. Seeny.
Is this somewhere where opengov.net might fall into place?
I think so, as part of our, well, Dr. Adley?
We discussed opengov.
So, like, my honest opinion of opengov, right? If it dovetails and integrates with Munis, and it doesn't provide any other major problem here, right, in terms of, like, then, fine, well, there, there should be no problem with that. I mean, if it's, if it's simple to do and it, it interse, it sort of like talks to Munis and we, and it makes sense, and it doesn't provide an awful lot of more work, okay, if that's, but, but that's kind of where, I just, you know, I need the board to institute that's what they want to do.
During our board goals and objectives, this came up, and Dr. Adley asked for time to study the best form, so that we didn't just say. to study the best form so that we didn't just say, okay, it's opengov. And so we granted them time to figure that out, not precluding opengov in any way.
So we're, we're very open to...
How far along are you, you think?
How far along?
Ninety, sixteen, nineteen?
I can't say that's my, like, I won't be just, I won't, like, I'll tell you it's not my first priority, but in a sense of, if there's a willingness to do it, yes, if it makes sense to do that, then I'd need a good reason not to, like, can we just move on from it and like, that's all?
So we'll look for them to come back to us and tell us when we're in the ballgame. How about that? Mr. Deneen?
No, I was just asking Dr. Adley, you have not used it?
We have not used it, no.
Rich, have you used it?
No.
In your previous jobs?
No. I don't know any district currently that does.
You don't know any Board of Ed district that currently uses it?
Right.
Well, we'll figure out whether we're trailblazers or we can find something even better.
But it is in the scope of review, yes. It is in the current scope of review, you doubt, the question will be asked.
Well, we have to come back anyway, just to sort of say like what our opinion of, but I'm open to it if...
Somebody else wants it.
Yes, the Board of Finance has made very clear they'd like it and John and I laugh about it. He, he knows, I think, that Dr. Adley and Rich are looking at the best way to make our budgets transparent and if that ends up being opengov, I have not heard anyone on this board object to it. If that ends up being something else, we just have left that door open so that we can find the best way to be the most transparent and most responsive to the budget, uh, I'm sorry, to the public on the budget. Although he did note it would help with his graph, so he doesn't have to make them. So I can appreciate that.
I'd imagine they might even want to allocate some funds to see it done as well.
Wow, we'll see.
Call them out on it.
Let's move forward to special education, which we've just heard lots about, but let us know where we are, Mrs. Sion.
And I think we did cover everything. The only thing I would add to is just an update on Dr. Marilyn French, she's in residence again this week, Thursday and Friday, Thursday to Middlesex. And Friday, we're going into our second meeting on the self-study for elementary school. Just to update the board, the first one was with all the building principals in the elementary school. We had a full day workshop on current practices and design. And this Friday, it will be the special education teachers and the assistant principals doing focus groups on current practices in our schools. So it'll be our second meeting for our self-study.
Great. Any questions on the special ed goals and objectives? We've heard a lot about them tonight. Alright.
And just thank you again to CDSP for ongoing communication and one of our goals with working with them also and their support.
Great. Human resources, Mrs. Sion?
Right, so negotiations with secretaries, nurses, and parries start in January. Obviously, we've concluded the teacher negotiations and they're reviewing the contract language very, very carefully, but they promised by the end of the week, we should have a contract to sign. And the food service workers, obviously, negotiations continue with that group. As far as supporting the professional capital of the staff, Dr. Adley, Dr. De Silva and I have working with the Darien Administrators Association about revising their evaluation plan, which was very clunky and just overburdened with goals and processes and didn't really allow for meaningful conversation. So we'll come to you in the spring with a presentation and a proposal for a new and more meaningful evaluation plan. The in-house data management system for the teachers is being implemented. People seem to be happy with it, but we are receiving, Dr. De Silva and I are receiving feedback and we're making adjustments as we go along and hopefully we'll be able to get the administrators involved in that system next year. With the help of Mr. Lynch and the high school administration, we were able to give our campus monitors on Election Day some additional safety training, which they had been asking for, and so we'll look to perhaps give some other professional development to the non, other non-certified groups in the spring.
Great, any questions? Alright, thank you. Did we leave somebody else's facilities? Who's handling this? Mr. Riddle and Ms. Lynch? Rich, you're back up.
Make it up, make it up, Michael.
Okay, so the first goal, we did update the response plan. The security assessments have been completed except for one building. And we've, we actually tested the lockdown system at all the schools over the Thanksgiving break and there were three little minor glitches, we've taken care of them and we're going to do a, an actual lockdown drill at the schools after we come back in January. We're working, it's one of the goals of the facilities subcommittee of the Board of Ed to look at a permanent solution to the storage needs of the district, particularly at the high school. And we're just, that's ongoing. We've taken two more architectural firms through all the school buildings and one who's given a preliminary report we got on Monday and the other firm should be given in plus of the day or two.
Okay. That's it? Ms. McCann?
I have two questions. The first is a question for the board, whether or not we could finish this process tonight, but bring this document back for an amendment. I'd love to actually add portables in. I think we've agreed as a board that it's a priority. And I think this document is meant to reflect and define the work of the administration. So I'd love to see it come back with an amendment that adds portables, a plan for redressing portables as a line item. I think there's other things that could potentially go on there. We talked specifically about optimizing our financial transparency and I think it might be nice to, to note that as a line item because it's an area of specific work in, in the, you know, the specific list of, of things that are happening. So it's a request that this come back with, to be amended as a living document.
Sure, I would need to hear from the administration because I think portables are a goal, but we would need to specify that so that no one thinks portables are a goal to be completed this year. This is like an annual document, so we would just need to be very specific.
Like we talked about Middlesex having a couple two-year goals, so we just would be, need to be specific about the timeframe, but not...
So that would be my only caution and no, no, I have no concerns about amending. My only caution would be that we make sure we're very specific about what the annual goal is or if it's a biannual or if it's five years so that we can help set expectations with the document going forward so people could follow along in the process. And in fact, maybe after we handle the next item, we can decide what that might actually look like. Any other comments and questions? Yes. Mrs. McCann?
More specifically, does the emergency response plan include what would happen in the event of a cybersecurity event?
The emergency response plan includes everything as required by the state. Cybersecurity is not currently required.
There's a template from the state you have to follow and we sort of merged that with the security plan that the town of Darien already had in effect, going back to 2006. And as I've said, they don't address cybersecurity. It's more from a facilities and an operational point of view and then there's a section in there on, you know, fresh drinking water in case of something and if there's large, you know, diseases, what would you do, so?
Tornadoes, you know, all the likely events.
It doesn't really go into cybersecurity at all. It's not, it's not even one of the topics. It probably should be, but it's not.
Mr. Brown?
Just a point of clarification, we have like a shared services model? We provide the IT to the town? The school does, the school district?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that would fall on us then to monitor the cybersecurity as opposed to the town managing that process?
Well, they contract the service from us.
Correct, with a provider.
And so if there's an issue of cybersecurity, we certainly can bring it up, it just doesn't happen to fall under Mr. Lynch for facilities.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
That is, has been actively under review since the start of the year in terms of policies and practices, what we received from the state, what we received from Cabe. So we've done, the technology department, that is the technology department for ourselves and the town, has reviewed that. We'll work with the local first responders and so on in town as well to coordinate our efforts in that regard. So we'll work very closely with the town. So that's, that's...
So I think I hear Mr. McCann saying is, could we have an update as you go through this? Maybe in the spring? Give us an update on the work?
Happy to update the board at any juncture along the way here.
Thank you. Alright, any further questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you all for this quarterly update and we look forward...
Technology.
Oh, sorry, technology. You're so close.
That's okay. So we have two goals that are quite similar in technology alongside us coming back and with the discussion around STEM. I think we could fit some of these other pieces in and that has been, I requested the Board of Education earlier this year, is to hear from the new director of instructional technology. So we had two goals, one was really to finalize our district technology plan that began to work.
We have a policy of no phones here.
I was gonna say, it's been a busy night with phones in our meeting, everybody.
We did offer, we have offered various parent sessions at every level, including an assistive technology session for families. We reestablished that technology committee and collected feedback and now we need to collect feedback beyond that committee from other stakeholders. In addition to that, we have created a technology professional learning plan. Joan collected feedback from our educators right at the start of the year, asking them for their needs and we've started to personalize and actually already, right from the start, personalize their professional learning and their needs. And those vary from school to school, level to level, whether it's the boards, the Viewsonic boards or the Chromebooks or the iPads or Apple educator interest or Google certification interest. So we really have made every effort to personalize the professional learning of educators depending upon where they are in the continuum. So you'll hear more, you'll hear more at some point this, this in the year 2020, early 2020, from Joan around STEM and technology.
Great, any questions? Seeing none, we will move on to community, which I also didn't mean to leave out.
So this, this one is a sort of, well, we've done some other things in terms of the website and so on, but this is one where I really want to sort of like roadmap and it needs to be worked on closely actually with our parents, to be honest with you. Because I think you can never do enough communication, right? And I think we can do, actually I think we can do more, I think we can do better, to be honest with you. So we'll look to work with the parents and we are looking at our own internal processes and so on to see what improvements we can make, but I'd like, I think we just need to be a bit more structured to how to get there, to be honest with you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, with that, I will say thank you and we will move on. And we look forward to the next quarterly update. We will move on to the discussion and possible action on the district-wise facilities. Dr. Adley, Mr. Maroney who's not here, so I'm happy to pinch-hit for him if needed, and Mr. Lynch. But I will turn it over to Dr. Adley and Mr. Lynch to begin.
So if I could sort of frame it again, you did receive the information on the libraries reimagined and this project coming, coming forward from the facilities committee, perhaps I did not make it clear the last time, the primary, the primary project moving forward is to remove the portables. That's really the, that's really where it started and that's really what came forward as a recommendation from that particular committee. And it came forward from the administration to not as major projects to do one at a time and reinvent one school at a time, that's not really what, I'm not gonna say they're all gonna happen simultaneously, but, but it wasn't like to do a school renovation, nor did, nor do our schools actually need that essentially in terms of the systems are in good shape and those that are not are, are built into the capital plan to, to be updated, but the structures of the schools are in good shape. So the major, the major emphasis here was to, let's have a plan through some architects to actually give us a roadmap to actually move, remove the portables and get, get them into the school in some capacity, right? So that's really what it was and then we had the, we had the libraries reimagined that just came along. So this was like sort of two proposals, one's for the, for the portables and the second is really for the libraries reimagined. They may as well do both, whether they're, if they see natural connections, fine, if they don't, they don't. I mean, that's, that's the long and the short of it. So we have gone out actually to, we've got like three out of the four architects are basically ready to go with submitting something for us in terms of a proposal. So essentially, we're looking at approval from the board to understand that's the direction we're, we're going forward, essentially.
Mrs. Richard?
I'm just curious, will they be using the master plan as their, the basis of their work or are they starting from scratch?
I think we, they, they use this. We did that, yeah.
Okay, it's because there are plans to remove the portables contained within here, so I just want to know if this is the starting off point?
Starting off point is the building condition survey and a set of CAD drawings for the school building. I guess as an example, we had a company come out two weeks ago, they gave me a report and they broke it down, concept A, concept B. Concept A is the three elementary schools with the portables. Concept B is the libraries at all six schools.
And where does storage fall into?
So storage is a separate discussion, for now it's a separate discussion, so if you close this discussion, I would suggest you keep them separate, to be honest with you.
I did not discuss storage with any of the companies I took around.
So are we discussing storage tonight or?
The answer is yes, you planned it, it's on the agenda for discussion tonight. If you want to have it now, I don't think it's obvious.
Let's take it, let's not cook, because it'll end up co-bengal.
Well, there's just the information was contained in our packet, so I think...
So let's take portables and any efficiencies in the, the simultaneous project we have of libraries reimagined first and then we can discuss the shed. I was the one who had some concerns just with libraries and wanting an update. I'm satisfied with the reissuing of the reports. I'm satisfied with the idea that portables are the primary goal and if anyone can come in and find that logical connection, that's great, as long as everyone knows removing those portables are the primary goal. So that's where I am at this point. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Seedy?
At last meeting's facilities discussion, there was a key piece of information that a number of us didn't have regarding what we discussed earlier in the update at Ox Ridge. And so one of my thoughts is, given that's such a big, and I think they're gonna work towards this close, I met with Mr. Coons for about ninety minutes this weekend and got a detailed update on everything. And I'm pretty confident that any changes we might have to discuss will be on the minor side, but, and not the major side, but from a proper planning standpoint, if we are going to have a special meeting, wouldn't it make sense for this board to have certainty around Ox Ridge before we go forward with a study on the portables? Just because that's such a large domino in, in this, in our facilities. It's a question I raise, I'm not advocating one side or the other, but...
No, I hear your point. I think we could do it either way. I, I do think that nobody still has the information on the building committee in Ox Ridge, right? We, we still await if that committee is gonna come back and make spec changes. I think what I hear you saying is, should they make spec changes that then alter anything significantly? Should we just hold on this decision? I think there's two ways that you can go. We could either say, okay, we could take up this agenda item in a special meeting along with that. Or what we could say is, we are approving that, but before anyone really came out and did the study, we would await any end spec changes that would cause a change. I'm not seeing those, even in what's currently proposed by the architects, significant changes. I think the board could consider Mr. Seedy's request. I'm comfortable either way. I'm fairly comfortable moving forward tonight also and just saying with the caveat that any architect should know where we are on Ox Ridge and if there's any space preclusions that might be included.
I guess, Dr. Adley, do you have any thoughts on...
My initial, my initial thought would just be, go ahead.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mrs. Richard?
To be clear, the, the study will include Henley Homes and Royal.
Yes, yes, and an addition, and an addition, the other schools for the libraries, yes.
Except for Ox Ridge.
Except for Ox Ridge, correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCann? I can see the question. Before the hand, I saw.
It's coming, thank you. And in the RFP, will we specifically write in consultation with the building committee because, the Ox Ridge building committee, because Ox Ridge is working on a library concept? I know it's meant to follow from the libraries reimagined work, but I wouldn't want one set of library solutions coming out of Ox Ridge and four others.
Well, it's the same for Ox Ridge, we're having the Ox Ridge architects collaborate with actually perhaps these other architects that we have to...
So, but that will be built in explicitly?
So would we, I guess the, the better, sorry, I didn't mean that, the better question, but maybe a way to be clearer, would we be, do we anticipate that we could be giving the building committee any educational specification changes around libraries? Or do we believe that those specs that we, for Ox Ridge will stay the same no matter
For now, I would say they stay the same, but I would, I would reserve, because, because...
You just made Duke's head pop off.
Well, we, we have had this discussion at the, at the building committee or at the design committee, that I certainly want to make sure that they are aware we have this library reimagined. I can't think that they're gonna design a library that's not too reimagined, I would hope, because they, they know what they're doing. Their architects and their... hope, because they, they know what they're, their architects know what they're doing. It's probably competing about who's reimagined the most. But we, but we certainly want consistency between that library and the other libraries, right? So, we'll have to make sure.
What you have to, what you have to do, and I don't think we're there yet in terms of the programmatic design and the schematic design, is they have their professionals of what they've seen in terms of new innovative libraries, and that should, we should take a little time and look at that as to what they bring to the table and what you all, the work that you have done. I don't think it's all that different from what I've heard at a high level, but, you know, to your point.
And certainly, the documents that, that were, that were received will be shared with the architects, too.
Yeah, so let's make sure the left hand and the right hand are speaking to each other, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, with that, are there any other questions? And may I make a?
So, just, just with respect to these, Mike, these architects coming in, so if you look, just as an example, you look at Royal, we want to get rid of the portables. Okay, so we get rid of the portables, what happens with what we're using the portables for, and how does that fit into the school? But those architects need to know in three years, when we consolidate ELP into Ox Ridge, it frees up four classrooms at Royal.
Right.
So, that's gotta be part of the logical, which was part of the conversation, I was trying to get a point last time that I didn't get across clearly. There has to be some coordination there, because there is a potential for some additional, whatever, construction around the fact that you want, you, we, we may want to get rid of the portables next year, what does that look like? But it's gonna be three years before we can free up those four classrooms and move them to, to Ox Ridge. So, that's all gotta be taken into consideration.
So, we'll just make sure, much like KGND passed along the information when Slam was hired, we just need to make sure everyone's sharing the same information set.
They get the information, they've all been given a tour, they've been shown where pre-K's gonna exit from, they've been shown the size of the.
Great.
Gyms, cafeterias, common rooms, the undersized fifth grades at Royal and Henley. So, they've been shown everything we could show them, you know.
Okay. All right, so, with that, I'd like to take this, this information first. I would like to entertain a motion to approve an architectural firm to study the removal of portables, classrooms at the elementary schools, and investigate libraries reimagined at all schools within the district. Mr. Seeny can make the motion, may I have a second? Mrs. Stein, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you all. Now, we'll take the shed, you can't go anywhere yet, Mr. Lynch. We'll be quick. Storage, I guess, no longer the shed, the storage facility.
So, we never did actually get this on the agenda, well, it was on the agenda, but we never really got there at the last meeting. So, there, there.
I'll take the blame for that. Lucky for.
Well, you should.
This is what we do all day, just for anyone who wants to know.
That's why I call it a little blarney.
Anyway, so this was the, this was the project that we were wanting to bring forward. In all honesty, yes, this should be looked at. What, what we've just approved, we're gonna have to do a transfer of funds for anyway, to be honest with you, like, probably from salary account or something. It would be our, without going through all of this, I think, you know, just, just enough about, about the storage, we would, we would actually at this point suggest we just defer this, because there's just so much you can lift up, one go. I just don't think it's gonna be possible to pull it off, to be honest with you. So, it's not as if I would kick it down the road completely, but for now, I, I wouldn't be coming forward with, can we have the authorization to go ahead with this? But.
Mrs. McCann?
Can I make a suggestion that we, again, think about the goals and objectives, maybe think about drawing this out a little, that maybe what we, got some thinking we can do around what our real storage needs are, how well we're using our storage today, that could be looked at today, potentially with staff and not dollars, and maybe talk to some of the outside organizations that are using the storage, and then maybe in a year's time, we can have another conversation, depending on what our workload looks like, take it more seriously, and just break that goal into smaller chunks.
Yes, so, I would agree on a couple fronts. One, Dr. Adley's point of, we have a transfer of fund, there's only so many places to pull funds and transfer from within a budget. And two, I think Mrs. McCann makes a good point, if we can go back a little bit, make sure all of our space is being utilized by the high school first, make sure anyone who has any creative ideas, we hear it internally, and then certainly, everyone wants to make sure our stuff is stored appropriately and safely, but to defer this until we make sure we've kind of cleaned house first, and then, and then move forward with the school.
Good use of words there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny.
We're, we're only juggling because we know. Is everyone else okay with that?
Yeah.
At this point? All right, so we will table this issue, and we'll have some conversations about what to bring back to the board, and when we do, we can have a more robust conversation on it. Sound good, everybody? All right. With that, we will move on, thank you, Mr. Lynch. We'll move on to action items and personnel items. Mrs. Stein?
Just one resignation of a paraprofessional at Darien High School.
Great. With that, may I have a motion to approve the PAR dated December tenth, two thousand and nineteen? Mrs. Stein and Mr. Burke, so moved, all in favor? That is unanimous. Is there any public comment? Oh, Mrs. Nelson?
Robin Nelson, fifty-one Arrowhead Way, I'm the CDSP budget co-chair, and I wanted to just ask a question, make a comment, building on the earlier conversation about the possibility of a differentiated or advanced math offering at the elementary level. I understand what you're saying, that math in focus is allowing that differentiation to occur, at least in the grades below fifth grade, but my question is, what is the plan and the timing to roll that out to fifth grade, especially given that fifth grade is such an important transition year, particularly for high-potential math learners who potentially might be placed into a course-three track in middle school in sixth grade, which is a very, very fast kind of, I think it's a year and a half that's covered in one year. My, having a fifth grader myself, who's also an idea, who is a, has aptitude for math, it would seem that having that kind of opportunity for fifth graders is a very important kind of a thing, that we could utilize time in the fifth grade year in particular to help either offer an advanced track option or a differentiation option that would allow that transition for course three to, to go more seamlessly. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Ta, ten o'clock Lane. Just for future ELP tuition discuss, discussions for the board to consider, that in addition, in addition to raising the tuition, it's my understanding from talking to ELP parents that we have changed the billing structure, and that we've added a three percent transaction fee, which brings the cost of ELP up. I've also heard from area, that area preschools are pressuring parents to come to them in the fours in order to guarantee them a spot in pre-K. And finally, a couple years ago, our district started, became a little more, for lack of better words, strict in enforcing its non-retaining of kids, students in kindergarten, so that makes it harder for parents to make a decision when they have a fall baby. I also want to comment on how incredibly impressive, talented, and dedicated our special ed staff is to our students. It has been an honor for me to work with them through my role at CDSP. Thank you.
Just when I started timing you, Mrs. Ta. Any other public comment?